I do believe that some of that feedback is still available. Even if you missed the event, you can still get feedback online. So, thank you so much for a really well-attended event. And I was able, we were able to make tiles for the art project, so it was really meaningful. So, again, very grateful for that. I want to uplift the cultural corridor mixer that was held at the Wynn Day last week as well. And a shout out to our economic development team for hosting that space. It was very well-attended and very grateful for our partners at the Wynn Day for making that event a success as well. Far too many Halloween engagements to lift up, but the Chunker Treats, partnerships with our business association, our public, our, excuse me, our Parks and Rec team just thank you for allowing our young people some joy. And I, more, more to come as Halloween is upon us, but please be safe while crossing the streets at night. It's a very dangerous night for pedestrians, so please, please be safe. Of course, the Climate Palooza, grateful for partners at West Los Angeles. And I just wanted to lift up that the Mar Vista Family Center is having a Dia de las Muertes on November 1st at their site at 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So, if that's of interest, I believe it's open to the entire community, so just wanted to uplift that as well. And I wanted to flag that the RSVP link went out for the State of the City. That's going to be on November 20th. So, if you're interested, please join us. That will also be at the Wynn Day. And to close out, go Dodgers and happy Halloween. Anything from our city staff?
Yes. This is Jeremy Bochino, city clerk, wearing my hat as the elections official. I wanted to let everyone know that if you didn't know yet, our 11-day Vote Center, which is right around the corner in the Patacia Room, first floor of City Hall at 9770 Culver Boulevard, opened on Saturday, and it will be open every single day, weekends included, from 10:00 AM till 7:00 PM, and then also on Tuesday, November 5th, Election Day. And those hours are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And if you're in line when it's 8 o'clock, you will be allowed to vote. So, make sure you get out and vote. And also, please note that if you were unable to register, you can register at the Vote Center. If you received a vote-by-mail ballot, you can bring it to the Vote Center and drop it off with them. Or, if you want, you can vote using the vote machines, the old-fashioned way. So, please do get out and vote. Thank you. And then I believe we have some members of the CBCs who have some announcements. Who was that?
Yeah.
This is from the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness.
I'm Jonathan Dilworth, Vice Chair, and this is Dr. Ge, Chair. Good evening, City Council. It's nice to see you honoring prior members of the committee earlier who have given their time and service to the group. In fact, during the tenure of these members, the idea of the homeless reporting dashboard was discussed, among many other things. If anyone's not familiar with this, this is a dashboard of the city's website, on the city's website, which holds all the statistics of Culver City's data of homeless services. For example, the statistics for the mobile crisis team are here, and we can see the impact this group is having on homelessness by tracking the calls they get, mental assessments done, and transports, among others. What's great to see in this data is that these services are impactful and working to reduce homelessness and help people get the services they need. In our last meeting, the committee discussed in-depth the use of the former Martin Redding Gun Store and came to the conclusion that the best use of this property would be affordable housing. We would like to recommend to the City Council to instruct city staff to conduct a feasibility study for an affordable housing development. The idea behind this first step is that the city would put out an RFP to local nonprofit developers and structure a deal in a way that is net positive to the city. We don't have to look far to see how other cities are doing, and it's best practice on how they're doing it. For example, Santa Monica and West Hollywood are both putting out RFPs on city-owned land to local nonprofits' developers so they can build more affordable housing within their community. We have a lot to learn from our neighbors in building housing to support our workforce. For example, both of these cities have had housing trust funds since the 1980s to support the development of affordable housing. Culver City does not yet have a housing trust fund. And just to wrap up, I want to talk about a couple myths about affordable housing. There's a lot of myths and misinformation about, out there about affordable housing and its effect that it has on your community. What many people don't know is that affordable housing is restricted to individuals using area median income, AMI, which means here in Culver City, where the AMI is $115,000 a year, an affordable housing project that has income limits at 60% to 80% of AMI are renting to individuals and households making around $70,000 to $90,000 a year. This means we're building housing for the workforce and the service industry, the film industry, recent college grads, and others that can't quite afford to pay market rate to live here in Culver City. Thank you very much.
Can I just add a word or two? We thought that this would be a propitious time to request, make this request of the Financial Advisory Committee because they might be the committee that's going to be doing feasibility study for this, for a project of this nature. And secondly, interest rates have come down, so this would be a good time for folks to think about future projects that are more affordable, for affordable housing in general. So, we'd like to make a formal request from the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness for an RFP, perhaps forthcoming from the Financial Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. City Clerk, when is Housing and Homelessness going to, or do, our city manager, when are they coming back for an update for us? Is there a date on that?
Mayor, I don't know. We'd have to get back to you with that.
Okay. I know I had asked for both a joint meeting, which I didn't think we would be able to do before the end of the year, but also to try to get ready for the colder weather so that the public could have more information about what to expect about some of those things. So, just wanted to flag that again, coupled with that request. But, thank you.
Thank you. And then is London McBride here for an update from the ERAC?
Good evening. How are you? To our City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and other members. My name is London McBride, and I am a member of the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee. I'm here tonight on behalf of ERAC to request the City Council's approval for ERAC to host a community conversation on November 19th, 2024. This to address the equity and human relations issues that have come to light following the ask by some community members of the City Council to pass a ceasefire resolution for Gaza. ERAC has the mandate to address equity and human relations issues in our city and ensure that residents feel seen and heard. Dozens of our community members have expressed that they are feeling unheard, dismissed, and even dehumanized. And the situation has been escalating with the community members feeling increasingly divided, frustrated, angry, and distressed. Several residents have even reported receiving death threats due to their positions on the ceasefire issue. I'm sure you agree that this state of affairs is unacceptable, especially in Culver City. We believe that we must urgently convene a community conversation where our community members can have a safe space to feel truly heard and walk away with more empathy and compassion for people with differing views and issues. ERAC already has a community conversation scheduled for February 2025 in our current approved work plan, but we cannot afford to wait that long, given the growing divide and worsening human relations within our city. This is why we ask you to support, to approve, and update to the ERAC work plan that will allow us to hold our planned community conversation as soon as November 19th. Our committee has already confirmed two professionals, very skilled and experienced facilitators, to facilitate this community conversation on November 19th. One facilitator belongs to an Israeli-American community and the other to the Palestinian-American community. For more details about this community conversation, please refer to the written plan we've submitted for your review. And agendize the consideration of this request by ERAC for the November 11th City Council meeting. We hope that on November 11th, you will also approve ERAC's request. Request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a staff member here from that body? I think there might be somebody online.
Hi, Mayor. Yes, we have Michelle Harmelton, our Senior Equity and Human Relations Manager, online as well.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Is the 19th date already agendized for the public?
No, there's currently a meeting that the committee requested to discuss other items on the agenda, but currently the community conversation is not scheduled for the 19th.
But there is going to be a meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions from colleagues? Okay. Thank you. Do we have representatives from Public Strategies, Institute for Public Strategies? Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Yasmin and the City Council. Thank you so much for inviting us. We are West Side Impact Project. We consist of wonderful organizations that serve this great city with the sole purpose of making the community safer and healthier away from the dangers of drugs. My name is Michael Young, and I am from the Institute for Public Strategies, and I'm going to pass it over to my coalition members to introduce themselves and their wonderful respective organizations.
Hello, my name is Emily Villarreal, and I'm a substance abuse counselor at Claire Matrix in Santa Monica.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is Stephen Kegel. I'm also substance abuse counselor and a certified grief counselor with the Department of Public Health, as well, I represent the agency Substance Abuse Prevention and Control.
My name is Jeff Gross from Zinc Method. I'm a Certified Alcohol and Drug Addiction Counselor, and I am contracted by the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District to provide assessment and intervention for substance use.
So, for today's presentation, we'll be focusing on understanding the fentanyl epidemic. So, we'll be discussing what fentanyl is, what fake pills are, as well as how fentanyl is being accessed, and recommendations and solutions for the City Council. Next slide, please. And this is our coalition and our respective organizations. Next, at the purple statistics, fentanyl overdose deaths has increased from 29 fentanyl overdose deaths in 2014, all the way up to 1,970 fentanyl overdose deaths in 2023. And this is across LA County. So, this represents that this is an escalating public health emergency issue, concern, that we want to bring, we want to bring to the City Council and address. So, if you look at the left map of the West Los Angeles area, you can see that this map depicts the fentanyl overdose deaths in 2022. So, you can see that Culver City and the surrounding areas were heavily impacted. So, this demonstrates that this crisis is hitting close to home. It's hitting in our backyard, and we need to do something about it. Next slide, please. So, in order to tackle this crisis, we have to start from the beginning. We have to educate ourselves. What is fentanyl? So, fentanyl is a man-made opioid that is incredibly powerful. You can't smell it, you can't taste it, so since you can't smell or taste it, it's extremely difficult to trace. So, there's two types of fentanyl. The first type is the pharmaceutical fentanyl that's prescribed by your doctor, is normally monitored or supervised by, you know, trained professional medical staff. And the second type of fentanyl that we'll be focusing on today for this presentation is illicit fentanyl, fake pills. So, I'm going to pass it over to Steve to talk about what fake pills are and how fake pills are a driving force to the fentanyl crisis.
Hi, thank you so much. Again, as Michael was saying, you know, with what we're dealing with and what I'm dealing with every day in the street is the illicit pills, the analogues that are being sent here and then made into dangerous fentanyl. The fake pills that are sold on the street or on the dark web are not, you know, a pill with a little bit of fentanyl. They are fentanyl pills, and they're being sold as the other pills. So, for instance, if a teenager buys an Adderall online, he's not getting some Adderall and fentanyl, he's getting fentanyl. And this is what's driving our overdose deaths, especially in our youth lately. These, again, these are not pills that are purchased from the doctor and picked up at CVS. These are pills that our, our youth especially are buying online or buying in the street. Next slide, please. Some of the main ones that we've seen are especially oxycodone. This is a very popular medication that is given to for a lot of different pain, acute surgeries. I took oxycodone for a mouth surgery that I had, a very small amount, just to be careful, but this is a very popular medication. Xanax is a medication for anxiety panic attack that's very given out by psychiatrists frequently. Adderall, Percocet, other opioid pain medications. Again, we're not concentrating on the ones that are given by a doctor and, and given to a person, let's say at CVS or Walgreens. We're concerned with the fake fentanyl pills. Next slide, please. So, these are some pictures from the DEA website, some people that I work with. If you look at the oxycodone on the left, I mean, some of the pills that are being pressed look more real than the authentic pills. They're actually pressed very, to look exactly like the pills. You can see the Adderall is one. Adderall is a psychiatric medication to get for, you know, ADHD, to make a kid go a little up a little bit. It's not to put them in a position where they're going to overdose from an opiate. So, this is what we're really concerned about, being sold on the web. Your Xanax, the bars that you see, third, you know, they're shaped exactly like a Xanax. They could be different colors, but when somebody looks at it, they might see that same shape and mistake it for the real pill. You cannot always tell. Next slide, please. And what I've been dealing with a lot in the schools is called rainbow fentanyl. CDC has actually dubbed this rainbow fentanyl. And they are the, if you look at the pills that are on the screen, they're shaped exactly like a oxycodone, which is the most popular pill, only they're colored and almost put a coating on it to be like a Sweet Tart. It's a statistical fact that a teenager will be more apt to take a pill that looks like candy than one that looks like a pharmaceutical pill. They look at a pharmaceutical pill, they might almost recoil a little bit, "Ooh, I don't know what that is." But if they see this, they're more apt to take it. So, this is the unfortunate thing that we're dealing with, that these people are selling these to our kids because they know that they're going to be the next dealers and people that are, that are hooked on these things. Next slide, give it to Emily for the next slides, please.
Even a small amount of fentanyl can be lethal. The image of the penny illustrates just how little it takes to cause an overdose, which can lead to death. I'd like to highlight the picture of the chocolate chip effect on your right, shared by the CDC, to emphasize the dangers of consuming pills. Imagine this, a cookie can have different amounts of chocolate chips inside, which is the same inconsistency with illegal drugs. When fentanyl is added, it is often present in unpredictable, unpredictable amounts and unevenly distributed throughout the pill. This makes it impossible to accurately determine the amount of fentanyl in any given pill, significantly increasing accidental overdoses and deaths. Next slide, please.
So, the question is, what can we do? What can we do as a community to stop this problem? So, the concept of harm reduction is typically something that we like to talk about. Harm reduction is just prevention through education and any approachable means. Next slide. So, this is Narcan. If you spend time around substance use professionals, you'll hear them say, like, Narcan saves lives. Narcan saved my life in 2018, I wouldn't be standing here. Narcan is naloxone. What it does is, applied nasally, it reverses the effects of an overdose. So, it immediately sends someone into withdrawal, which is gnarly, but it allows their life to be saved, and then they're able to breathe again, which allows for critical intervention from medical personnel and will save a life. There's also the Good Samaritan Law attached to Narcan and different forms of harm reduction, whereas like, if someone calls 911 and applies Narcan in an overdose situation, they have protection from any legal action. They were there to save a life, and they were taking action to save a life. Next slide, please. So, obviously, abstinence is the best thing that we can preach to everyone is, you know, don't use drugs, don't use fentanyl. But that's being naive to think that this isn't in our homes and all around us. I think most people know someone who is affected by the opiate epidemic. Having access to fentanyl test strips allows someone who is hooked on opiates and needs, feels the need to use them, having access to fentanyl test strips allows them to just simply test their drugs before they use it so they don't accidentally overdose. I don't think anyone actually tries to overdose. It's just, it's a, it's a fact of what we're dealing with right now. So, I know, I speak for my colleagues, that we are always available to discuss options for harm reduction. Thank you.
So, we have some recommendations for the City Council. One is that we would love to collaborate with the Culver City to increase access to harm reduction tools such as Narcan and fentanyl test strips, which are located on your orange bags that each of you have. And we would love to make sure that these resources are available in public spaces such as parks, as well as libraries and other public spaces. I do want to note that as a coalition, we do offer free fentanyl test strips and Narcan. So, that's something that we can offer. Second thing is that we would love to work with the Culver City School District to educate the school staff, as well as the parents and the students, on the dangers of fentanyl. So, if you could help us connect to someone at the school district, we would truly appreciate that. And the last thing is, we would recommend ongoing collaboration by regularly meeting with the mayor, the city council, and/or staff. I know y'all get busy, so, to communicate our coalition findings and our recommendations. And I think transparency is very important, it's very needed, and we would love to circle back to share input, as well as other policy recommendations. So, we would truly appreciate that. And on top of that, we do have an upcoming town hall event, a fentanyl town hall awareness event coming up in Culver City, and we would love to collaborate on that as well. Final words is that your decisions today can save lives tomorrow, and together we can make our city safe. So, thank you very much, and if you have any questions, we're happy to take them. Thank you.
Do you have a date for the event coming up in Culver City, or are you planning it?
Um, yeah. So, we're actually collaborating with these wonderful folks here. The, the date is not finalized yet, but we're happy to let you know once that's finalized.
Okay. So, I want to, just a couple of questions before I go to colleagues. Do we have the average age of folks that are, and because I know you had a lot of data with touchpoints and where folks were impacted in our area, but is there an average age of folks that are being impacted by fentanyl or by dying unfortunately of overdose? Or do we have data on that? Or?
Yeah.
I mean, it's definitely, now, as of 2023, it's the leading cause of death, 18 to 45. So, it's expanded. Now, the problem is, too, with these new things that they're doing, we're seeing it in younger, we're seeing more, unfortunately, things happening in schools, especially with the vapes, the vape pens and things like that. So, we're just, I think that's our, public health has been, we've been really, really going to, wanting to talk to youth and the parents. So, that's kind of our goal. We want to see, see if we can just give some information. I'm doing a coffee with principals at our local schools, Hamilton's and the universities. So, we're trying to also talk to Culver City if possible.
Yeah, absolutely. And do we know what the average success rate is for Narcan overall, like, when administered properly?
Yeah.
I've unfortunately, myself, I've worked in acute detoxes for, I've witnessed seven, and we've saved all seven.
Okay.
Now, that's because we got to them fairly quickly.
Right.
But I've also been right along, because I've heard that even PD here has saved people. So, I think it's, it's wonderful to have, and we're really trying to get a coalition together, just to get it out. It's free. We, we're trying to get it out free to the community.
Yeah. What are the type of locations that y'all typically provide when you partner with, for example, a school district or a city, for example? Are there specific, I know you said the parks and things like that, but would it be like a state, for example, I serve on Lhasa, and we have a little, like, clear box. So, I noticed the Narcan here is in, like, smaller packages, but theirs is like, probably a little, a little box, and it's in a clear, and it's just, you know, it's open, you can take it. And people have been taking it, which is nice. Every time I go, there's less Narcan, which is good, which means that harm reduction is happening. But are there specific sites that are recommended?
So, right now, the main distribution for Narcan, if you're not buying it at a pharmacy, is going to be like, something like a public health facility, or like, a police station or a fire station. But if you consider the, the demographic of the individuals who need Narcan, and you think what's going on in someone's mind is, is not to go into a police department or not to, you know, go to a public health facility. So, that's why community outreach is so important and partnering up with different events or different places where safe, calm, peaceful, and nonjudgmental distribution of Narcan can be effective. Also, again, to reiterate the idea of, of schools. So, just going to take this moment to explain where there is a thought that if having Narcan somewhere, you are, you are saying, "We have fentanyl here." So, we don't want to have Narcan because that's accepting that we have the problem. But the real problem is going to happen when someone overdoses in the bathroom and school administrators, teachers don't have access to it. And that's just like the sad reality of this. This is, the epidemic is real, it's not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera, any questions?
Nothing. Thank you so much for the presentation and the little bag and information. Appreciate it all.
Councilmember Erickson, any questions, comments?
Thank you. Thank you. What you're doing is enormously important. So, we put fentanyl into all our patrol cars a couple of years back, and that was actually initiative that I took because I went to a conference and learned that we need to do this. And as of now, our PD has brought back to life somewhere around 18, 19 individuals. So, it actually works, right? I've also been a library commissioner for LA County Library, and we put, during this year, we have had Narcan distribution in the library. And that could be, so we have a Culver City library here, right? So, that could be a point that you want to connect to also, because it's not the PD, it's not the fire, it's sort of, it was also very successful. Through the LA County Library System, we distributed a ton of Narcan. So, I, you know, I'm termed out, otherwise I would have taken on to guide you or work with you on this very important topic. So, I hope one of my colleagues will do that because, yes, the school needs to be really involved, and maybe some of our faith organizations also, but talk to the library. And if you don't have the contact there, let me know. I will introduce you to, to our head librarian, but thank you for what you're doing. Very important. So, my question is, if I am a parent and I want these test strips, can I buy them at CVS? The test, the fentanyl test strips, can I go to CVS or Rite Aid or somewhere and buy this stuff? I don't talk, you know, I'm talking about the fentanyl test strips now.
Yeah. So, for, in regards to the Narcan, I mean, in regards to the fentanyl test strips, I believe you can purchase them. But the thing is that, the thing is that what we want to do is make sure that the But the thing is that, the thing is that what we want to do is make sure that the resources are accessible and free for the community because the thing that we found out for these resources, they, it costs a lot of money in regards to like, for example, like the Narcan, it costs around like $40 to $100 per box and it only has two nasal sprays. So, and that's something that is, you can purchase at a CVS. But what, what we really appreciate and value as a nonprofit organization and public health organization is we want to make sure that these services, I mean, these resources are free and accessible to everyone who really need it. So that's what we want to emphasize on, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I know we have two colleagues here who is on the school liaison subcommittee, so I'm sure you can bring that to the school district, those contacts, right? So thank you for what you're doing. It's really important.
Councilmember Puzza.
Thanks for the presentation and for all the work that you're doing. Very important work. Just curious, how is your organization funding funded? Is it all through the Department of Public Health?
I'm with Substance Abuse Prevention and Control, so we're a grant through, we're Substance Abuse Prevention and Control. So we're funded that. But even to give you an example with the test strips, we actually had to buy the test strips, Public Health. So we bought them through End Overdose, which is one of our big friends that we have. And now it looks like we're getting some, so it's been a little tough with the test strips. But the Narcan we have in full with your idea with the Narcan, the library, that's wonderful. We'd love to, we do that in Inglewood, go to the Inglewood Library right next to my Curtis Tucker office. And we'll go there with the Narcan and try to hand out and we'll just, you know, and sometimes they, you know, we're like, please, just, just in case it's for somebody else, you know, we try our best and then they'll, so like Jeff said, nonjudgmental. But we really, thank you so much. We really, those are wonderful ideas and we appreciate your listening to us. Thank you.
Well, this is obviously a serious issue affecting people, you know, in our city, killing people at alarming rates. So education is key. Pretending it doesn't exist will not help us. I support harm reduction efforts in a nonjudgmental space, I think is really important as well. So I would love to support learning more about partnering with this organization. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor.
Nice, Mayor.
Yeah, hey, thank you for your presentation. As a D and film editor, I did a PSA side by side with a parent of, whose daughter overdosed. And like one of the examples, overdosed and died. I think she thought she had Xanax and it was laced with fentanyl and, you know, lost her life unexpectedly. So I definitely feel like, my wife is also a teacher and I know that there's an opt-in training for teachers at Culver City schools. I'm pretty sure my wife has done it as well, but education brought to the school district, you know, to make sure that there's, you know, everything that they need. I think it's a good idea. I have a open line of communication with the superintendent, so I can reach out to him and find out if he'd like to have a meeting. Thanks.
And thank you again for coming. I'm so grateful that I connected with you. I think it was at a child's dream, I forget, maybe it was this summer. So I'm grateful that we finally got you all to do this presentation and hopefully we'll have the opportunity to collaborate and lift up these lifesaving efforts that y'all are involved in. Thank you so much for your work and your advocacy. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Okay. Do we know how many public comments we have?
We currently have 49.
Okay.
And prior to reading off the first 10 or so names, I have two announcements to make. The first one is regarding hate speech. This is for the members of the public to let everyone know that the members of the public have a right to speak on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of city council. However, this council strongly denounces hate speech and does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Culver City prides itself on its diverse community and inclusion of all persons. We are committed to creating a safe space in the city and in these chambers where members of our community feel included and respected. Secondly, we have a statement regarding campaign activity. Council chambers are a limited public forum. Pursuant to the city council policy, campaign activity is prohibited during council meetings and council chambers. No person may advocate for or against a candidate or a measure in a national, state or local election. And now the deputy city clerk will start reading the names and we will call you in the order in which you signed up to speak.
Jeremy, before we go there, I just want to let the record reflect that I was here at 8 o'clock.
Let the record reflect that council member Vera was actually arriving at 7:55. I marked it. And also prior to, we could do it now if you'd like to, do another roll call to let the record reflect. All members are present.
It's up to the mayor, whatever you like.
That's fine. You want to do that? Great. Councilmember Vera.
Present.
Councilmember Puzza.
Present.
Councilmember Erickson.
Present.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Present.
And Mayor McMoran. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The first 10 speakers are Nicholas Connor, Emily D., Lolo Mavassian, Sherna Gluck, Stephanie Sharp, Mariah Fontine, Mariah Beg, Hala Kaye, and Ronald Davis, and Hung Nye Elbek. Our first speaker is Nicholas Connor.
Good evening, council members.
Each member of the public will have a minute and 30 seconds to speak and you can follow the time right here on the board. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you for your time tonight. Been here a lot and for me, starting to get embarrassing that we have to keep coming back to this, keep begging for our dignity, just to be heard, just to have a conversation. So I'm really, really grateful for the Iraq Committee and the time that we've had with them the last couple of sessions and for Mr. McBride to come and do the right thing and just say the right thing, which is please give space for this conversation quickly. How many tens of thousands of people have died since we were here in August? How many thousands more people will keep dying when we have to wait until February? And I know that this is not going to stop any war, but it's going to do a lot to stop the pain that people in this community feel. We do not trust our leaders anymore. I don't trust my public, my local leaders. I don't trust my national leaders. I hear them talk about diversity and inclusion and I'm stuck deciding if I'm in a vote for somebody who's been carrying out a genocide or somebody who is saying they're probably going to do the same thing. I need to hear from somebody that they actually mean what they say. And if you are not ready to vote for a ceasefire resolution, which is what we really should have been done by now, please vote for Iraq to talk about this on November 19th.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily D.
I'm here to address the rise in anti-Arab and anti-Mana community in Culver City. You literally have a racist serving on the Iraq Committee who made the most awful comments about the genocide. She was very dismissive with what the public was asking. So there's Culver City for you. You keep claiming the genocide doesn't affect our city. Well, Ms. Janine Staling, who is running for city council endorsed by some council members here, is also endorsed by Democrats for Israel. How many of you here are willing?
Excuse me? Excuse me? There's no campaigning activity here.
I'm not calling. I'm not campaigning. Who's the arbitrarist? I'm calling out. Who's getting money from a foreign entity? And there's no one, this person, who's getting money from a foreign entity.
I'm so sorry. Excuse me. Madam, I'd like to caution the speaker that campaign activity is prohibited during council meetings in the council chambers. No person may advocate for or against a candidate.
I'm calling out people advocating for a foreign country, not a city. That's the problem. They keep coming back, intimidating. Talk about it.
Coming back here pleading for you to stop racism, hate, what, I just want to know, who are you working for? Are you listening to any of us? Could you look up, please, when I'm talking, at least have the decency to listen to one of your constituents?
I was just looking at you, Ms., but just focus on your time. We want to make sure you receive it. Thank you.
They need to hear that. So every time you repeat propaganda, you are dehumanizing the community in Culver City. Every time you mention that, you are dehumanizing the Mana community in Culver City. Every time you say Israel has the right to defend themselves, you are inciting violence and promoting supremacy. If you don't understand why I am saying these statements, then you need to shut the F up about Palestine and save your bigoted behavior for your proud boys in KKK rallies if you don't understand what we are talking about.
Our next speaker is Lolo Mavassian.
Hello, my name is Lolo Mavassian. When I look at Gaza, I see clearly that genocide is happening. How do I know that? Because I'm an Armenian. And as an Armenian, we were the first nation who experienced genocide in 1915 by Ottoman Empire. And yet, we allowed 108 years later, the genocide happening again. What happened to our humanity? Why are we here? What's going on? Culver City, open up your eyes. Be at the right side of the history. This is now the time to say yes to permanent and immediate ceasefire and yes to arms embargo. Otherwise, your money, my money, our money is going towards the bombs to kill the children. Do you want that on your conscience? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sherna Berger Gluck. I'm one of the Jewish founders of Justice for Palestine LA, the group that spearheaded the Santa Monica ceasefire resolution. Like you, even the sympathetic Santa Monica City Council members were concerned about divisiveness in the community. Much of this concern is fueled by the way in which fear of antisemitism has been weaponized by the Zionist lobby. You should be aware of it. I have experienced antisemitism, severe antisemitism. That's not what's happening. The ceasefire resolution that ultimately was drafted by a Jewish council member of the Santa Monica City Council passed on a vote of six to one after lengthy, lengthy discussion. And lo and behold, the sky in Santa Monica did not fall. People in this country want the genocide to, although we are about to send more, we continue to send more. If we could stop it as soon as we stop sending the arms, that would be it. In any event, this is not a popularity contest. It's about our humanity, your humanity, and it's about time that you die.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Sharp.
Thank you again for allowing this. I don't know what I would do if it weren't for Culver City for Peace and public comment. I've spent so much time in tears and panicking, wondering if people that I love are okay. 14 years ago, I spent time with four girls the same age as our ballerinas this evening in an orphanage in Lebanon, and I have not heard from them in a long time. I have had nightmares of tanks rolling up Washington Boulevard and experienced intense fear even in my sleep. I understand that people say that it's not my fight, but the truth is Arab Americans have been fighting implicit bias, which has been widely accepted, shown, displayed in television and become the subject of comic relief. They've been constantly met with disregard and dismissal and this disparity should not be on the shoulders of Arab Americans to bear. It's my job as someone whose heritage is assumed and accepted. This is our job as a city to make sure that every single person is heard and feels equal. You rely on our leaders, be they local, federal or global, to be that voice for us that gives us the confidence to stand in our own humanity.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mariah Fontine, followed by Maria Beg.
Good evening. I'm Mariah Fontine, Culver City resident, homeowner, teacher at Culver City High School. I am a Korean-American. I'm an immigrant. My parents are immigrants. I am a Christian. I don't really have any ties to the Mina community here other than that I share humanity, DNA. I share similar desires, just want to live in peace, to have harmony. And I can't sleep at night. Palestine is the last thing I think about when I fall asleep. It's the first thing I think about when I wake up because I know that my labor and tax dollars are going towards these bombs, these F-16 planes. Every single plane is an American plane. I've seen, I've FaceTimed with Palestinians in Gaza and I've actually seen US-made bomb, like shrapnel and pieces in their homes with my eyes. And I know that it's my government, it's my country that I love that's doing this to them. And I just want to read to you something that was tweeted this weekend by the acting under Secretary General for Humanitarian Affairs and UN Emergency Relief, Joyce Musuya. She said, "What Israeli forces are doing in besieged North Gaza cannot be allowed to continue. Hospitals have been hit, health workers detained and first responders prevented from rescuing people trapped under the rubble. Shelters have been emptied and burned down, families have been separated and men and boys taken away by the truckload. The entire population of North Gaza is at risk of dying. This is an emergency."
Our next speaker is Maria Beg, followed by Hala Kaye.
Hi, good evening. I'm Maria, Culver City resident. I feel like at this point, I don't know if I have to continue introducing myself since I've been here, meeting after meeting, asking this council to agendize a ceasefire resolution or at least hold a community conversation. But maybe I do have to keep introducing myself because maybe to you, I'm invisible. My community is invisible. We are ignored, meeting after meeting, as we come here in tears, as we come here so vulnerable and expressing our distress every single day that this genocide continues. And every single meeting, we're still ignored. I attended the race relations talk with the high school students and it was so eye-opening. One, to see that none of the council members attended the actual panel discussion was upsetting. But then also to hear what our students had to say. The fact that they feel like Culver City is performative, that their voices aren't heard, that their affinity groups are just for show, but there's no actual change that happens from what they're seeking, that our students are hurting. And whereas, what are you going to do about it? Your community is hurting. Your community is hurting, your students are hurting, and this is on you as a council. You have the responsibility to hear what we're saying and to acknowledge how we're feeling and to do something about it. You might feel like, I can't do anything, I'm one person, I'm one city council. But eight billion people, together, we can't...
Ms. Beng, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Hala Kay, followed by Ronald Davis.
Members, we are more than a year into the conflict in Middle East, and it's mind-boggling that just two weeks into the attacks on Israel, we were so fast-tracked to do the right thing. And we are one year into where we have 100,000 of people, amputees, disabled children, orphans. And to come here in numbers and robes does not mean anything. To bear witness does not mean anything. I really hope that people who vow to represent and speak as leaders would have the courage, at least, to acknowledge the pain of people who are not even your city residents, not even country members. I think we are a very global community. And if we cannot speak to that, I think it speaks to our inhumanity and our disconnection from the global world. Our tax dollar impact the world. We are using research subjects. We are using other people's countries as research subjects for our systems of defense. When is it going to stop? Where is it going to stop? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ronald Davis, followed by Hung Nagim Elbek.
Good evening. You know, I stand here, and when I think about my Culver City Council, I wonder how in the world the council members sleep at night in the face of this council's complicity in genocide. And the council is complicit. Because the council has remained silent in the face of the ongoing genocide committed by the Israeli war machine and because Israel has expanded its war machine into Lebanon and God knows where else it's going to go, my plea, I guess, is not so much that we wake up or that we support even a ceasefire because I think that's not going to happen. I know the city council. But the facts are that the city council is actually not only complicit by its silence, but it's complicit by allowing funds that the city council controls to be invested in war-profitarian corporations that have been identified by such funds as the Sovereignty Fund of Norway. You know that.
Mr. Davis, your time has expired. Thank you. Our next speaker is Hung Nagim Elbek, followed by Vendanta Dasu, Sarah A., Jane Ziegelboim-Ahni, Mariana Gomez, Soar, Lisa Schultz, Estee Chandler, Ferhat H., Eli Levi, and Alice Hawari.
Ready to show the strip of Gaza kind of transposed in front of, on top of Los Angeles to show how much little land is left living. Well, I did send you two reports on the humanitarian crisis in Gaza that has reached one of the darkest days this past weekend. Today, we face a grave humanitarian crisis in northern Gaza where hospitals are not just overwhelmed, but increasingly targeted. We call this medicide. Out of 16 of 36 partially functioning hospitals remaining in the country, the only remaining hospital in northern Gaza called Kamal Adwan Hospital was invaded this weekend. This small hospital is only built for 50 patients. It's smaller than the marine rehab hospital we have in Sepulveda. And they were overwhelmed with about 150 to 200 patients. The director, a few weeks ago, the director of the hospital, Dr. Hussam Abuya Sophia, stated that one wounded patient died every hour. Two weeks prior, as Israel forces descended onto this small stretch of land, the director's message requested blood products, surgical specialists, and medical supplies is broadcasted to the world. Then this weekend, three days ago, while I was on call, the hospital housed almost 400 wounded patients and was violently seized by Israeli forces. Reports from the UN indicated that doctors and nurses were arrested, detained, medical supplies and facilities were ransacked and destroyed, leaving patients in dire condition and tragically under the care of mere three remaining physicians. The Israeli army allowed for ambulances to transport the sickest patients, patients with amputated legs, children with colostomy bags, and patients with open wounds. Then when the paramedics moved the patients off the hospital grounds to the ambulance 50 meters away, they were fired upon. "I think this is one of the least dignified and inhumane things I've ever seen in my life," said a UN worker. After being released from his detainment yesterday, Dr. Sophia, the director, returned to his hospital only to find his teenage son to be executed. There's a video of him this morning bearing his son on the hospital grounds. WHO and United Nations have condemned these actions and all violence against health facilities and healthcare workers. We are witnessing a direct violation of human rights and a breach of international law. I'm sharing this story and this visual because as community members of Culver City, I'm one of hundreds, if not thousands, of residents that care about humanity and will not turn away from history. If Iraq Committee can be empowered to carry community discussion on these types of atrocities and the traumatic effect upon our residents, I support this on November 19. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vendanta Dasu, followed by Sarah A.
Good evening, city council and community members. Over the past couple months, city council residents, or Culver City residents, have given up their well-earned free time to fight for a ceasefire resolution to be passed by this council. We've been moved and angered by the ruthless and brutal regime of Israel as it continues its genocide against the Palestinian people. As we speak, Israel is committing an ethnic cleansing in northern Gaza with Israeli organizations and media touting resettlement and selling land that's directly recently been stole from the Palestinian people. Through all of this, community members have tried to create a dialogue with you, our representatives, but have been received with nothing more than a patronizing attitude. Politicians favoring their careers and political funding are not new to us. This is America, it's expected. However, history will not look kindly upon the city council. A ceasefire resolution from a city council is a bare minimum that we can do to be on the right side of history. Yet this council does not even have the moral backbone to support such a simple initiative. You just have to raise your hand, that's it. Ultimately, your inaction has caused this community to realize that all your talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion... Through your inaction, you have essentially added fuel to the movement for a free Palestine. Palestine will be free, it is inevitable. It's the progressive force of history, just how any oppressive regime falls. Just know that you have chosen to stand against that force of history, pass a ceasefire resolution, and divest from all the weapon manufacturers in Culver City and any warmongering entity in our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah A., followed by Jane Ziegelboim-Ahni.
Good evening to the city council. I'm Sarah. I am a very concerned community member. You council members ignore your constituents. You cannot absolve yourself of any responsibility to hold this conversation based on the claim that it's irrelevant to the council. Our taxpayer dollars are funding this genocide, buying the bombs being dropped on hospitals and refugee camps in Palestine, and now far beyond. We, as citizens, have a stake in this, and you, as our elected representatives, cannot turn your other cheek. Many of you made vague promises in your campaigns for city council to be accountable to Culver City residents and to listen to our needs. You are all failing very miserably at this. Never again can I support your political careers, especially in dialogue with my community. Never can I applaud your accomplishments. I will never do any of these things because I will always remember the way you failed us and the way you failed Palestinians and the way you failed all oppressed groups and your silence by letting our tax dollars fund a genocide. Yet you parade yourselves as champions of diversity, equity, and inclusion, all while your Palestinian constituents suffer immensely, as you have heard and as you have heard for weeks and weeks and meetings upon meetings. Culver City will remember your silence.
Our next speaker is Jane Ziegelboim-Ahni, followed by Mariana Gomez. I'm not seeing anyone by that name online. Jane, if you're online, please message me. I'm not seeing them online or in chamber. Our next speaker is Soar.
All right. Hello again, city council members. I'm Soar, and I am here again, but this time to show support for the Iraq Committee in organizing a community forum as soon as possible in November 19 of this year. We have done what you've asked and talked to Iraq to just get a community discussion as was suggested before even getting y'all to consider a ceasefire resolution to end the violence we are witnessing. We have borne witness to too many lives being lost since we first brought this resolution to you in August. But apparently, sharing about children being bombed with our tax dollars daily isn't enough. You've had us go through so many hoops to just get this point of a community forum where in October 2023, it took you less than a month to approve a resolution on supporting Israel. Putting us through all these steps instead of showing the same quickness as you did in October is really showing of who you are choosing to listen to in the community. We've come time and time again, and not just to be heard, but we've been waiting and demanding for your actions to show that you are hearing others that are hurting in this community. And honestly, I feel for all of those who are here who still have family members or lost family members in Gaza and have to come here and demand to be heard and seen by you every single time. I urge you all to consider agendizing and approving the community forum on November 11 so that it can be held on November 19 because it's the least that you can do, and we will be back.
Our next speaker is Lisa Schultz, followed by Estee Chandler.
Good evening, council members. On August 12, I stood in front of you and said this. When we shrug while tens of thousands of children in Gaza are blown to bits, we show our children that we're okay with normalizing horrific violence that will spread just as gun violence spread when we didn't stop it after the first school shooting. Since then, in just two and a half months, the atrocities perpetrated in Gaza against children and civilians by the State of Israel have gotten exponentially worse, and they've spread to Lebanon. And what was once unheard of, mass terror, like detonating thousands of pagers that killed hundreds of civilians in Lebanon, bombing capital cities like Beirut, and targeting hospitals and journalists has now been normalized because politicians have shrugged instead of standing against genocide. Politicians have shrugged and abandoned their morals. Politicians have shrugged and allowed recognized international law to be completely disregarded. Politicians like you, Mayor McMoran and the absent Freddie Puzza, politicians who care more about not agreeing with the other side and giving them some perceived win than they do about their morals, their children, their community, or their humanity. Politicians like you are responsible for the spread of this violence, for the reality that we have seen civilian men stripped, almost naked, rounded up, and buried alive, for the fact that we have seen bloody bags containing bits of children handed to their terrified and traumatized parents, for the fact that Gaza is nearly completely destroyed. The entire Cajun population has been the victim of psychological warfare, mass starvation, complete destruction of hospitals, schools, universities, cultural centers, churches, and mosques. Winter is coming, and everyone in Gaza, and now millions of people displaced in Lebanon, will be freezing and starving with no hope in sight. And it's all because of weak, corrupt politicians.
Ms. Schultz, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Estee Chandler, followed by Ferhat H.
Human rights advocate. It's been a year since this council passed a resolution, sadly filled with falsehoods, including that you, quote, "strongly acknowledge the pain and suffering that civilians in Gaza are going through," end quote, as exemplified by your long refusal to do something as basic as passing a resolution calling for a ceasefire to protect all lives, as opposed to the one written with a clear agenda, not even checked for accuracy, that completely failed to recognize the diverse and popular desire for a ceasefire by the majority of the constituents in this city. I've watched the despair and frustration grow among so many in this community who rightfully feel that their pain and suffering and the safety of their family and community members continues to be ignored by you. The racist bias this council has shown for the past year is heartbreaking to all of us who love this city. I'm a Jewish American, and I continue to tell you that my Jewish community supports a ceasefire, supports a weapons embargo, and UN Relief and Works Agency funding to be restored in order that an unrestricted flow of humanitarian aid can safely be delivered. One year later is past time for you to join us working in a way that benefits all the citizens as opposed to acquiescing to supporters of a racist ideology, putting the world on the brink of another great war. We have been here six times, and to the Iraq Committee twice, per your request. And we will not be deterred by your unequal treatment of particular members of this community unlike your two-week, fast-tracked process for that resolution passed last October. So tonight, I'm asking you to direct staff to hold a special meeting for discussion on our community's concerns about the deteriorating conditions in Gaza on November 19. The 16 resolutions passed in greater Los Angeles cities this past year have been crucial to fostering unity, healing communities, and making everyone feel like they belong. Will Culver City ever be a place like that again?
Estee Chandler, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Ferhat H., followed by Eli Levy.
Today, I'm going to be the voice of the voiceless. Today, I'm going to talk about the Jewish people of the Meir Shi'irim, the Jewish people of Jerusalem. My brothers and sisters in Jerusalem, in Meir Shi'irim, they are facing antisemitism because of the Israeli government. The majority of my brothers and sisters in Meir Shi'irim, they are refusing to go and commit genocide against the Palestinians and the Lebanese. They are put in jail. Today is so funny. Everyone talks in the name of the Jewish people, but none of you know what we really want. We never wanted war with the Palestinians. We lived with the Palestinians. I exist today because of the Arabs. When my ancestors were saved, they were put in trains and being killed by white people. when they were put in trains and being killed by white people, the Arabs and the Muslims saved them. But today, what we are doing, we are listening to Zionists, to people that they are telling me that they wish Hitler would come back and kill my people, my grandma, that she lived in Algeria and we live happily in North Africa. But today, it's okay. In the name of the U.S., we are just killing Palestinians. We are bombing mosques. We are bombing churches. Earlier, we had people talking about fentanyl. Instead of us sending money to kill innocent people in the Middle East, we should invest in education. We should invest in healthcare. What we're doing, we have just been silent. And when we talk and when we are mad, we can't even be mad. We have people telling me every single day that they want to kill me, that I am a self-hating Jew because I stand for equality. And last week, you guys need to hear this. Last week, our song was destroyed by-
Mr. Farhat, your time has expired.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Yes.
I'd just like to say to the audience, I suffer from severe tinnitus. Extreme. And I'm going to have to leave. If you can't keep it at a normal level, just, I want to hear all your voices, but I'm dying up here right now. So you want me to walk out? Please, just speak in a normal-
Vice Mayor, if you have to step into the back to take care of yourself, there are speakers back there. However folks are showing up, we're going to honor that, and let's continue with public comment. And if you need to take care of yourself, the speakers are in the back. So let's move forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eli Levy, followed by Alice Hawari.
So, I looked at the beautiful ballerinas that we featured earlier and thought to myself, well, at least 16,000 Gazan children will never have an opportunity to display their dancing skills. And that's because they've been butchered by our cold, genocidal government, in no small part thanks to collective silence undergirding it. That's the impromptu part. My name is Eli Levy. I'm Israeli, and I'm a homeowner in Fox Hills, Culver City. You know, it hasn't lasted on me. It's utterly pathetic for me to essentially beg you for a symbolic ceasefire resolution to stop a genocide. The only thing that could ever be more pathetic than me begging you for this is for you grown adults to summarily ignore my plea. So begrudgingly, I put my otherwise very healthy ego in abeyance, and I soldier on, centering the mercilessly butchered and starving Palestinian children in my actions by amplifying their otherwise muted voices. Muted no less. Muted no less by the haunting, silent scream emanating from this port pathetic in action in the face of genocide. Pathetic as it all continues to be, this time I request not begging you to disabuse yourself of all the pathetic excuses you may have entertained in the past to oppose an immediate and a permanent ceasefire. And maybe, just maybe, your conscience may think-
Mr. Levi, your time has expired. Judy Sherman, Marcy Bond, Polly Stenberg, Ron Basilian, Jean Black, Jared Bailey, Zach Norwood, and Nasola.
Hello, council members. I'm a Culver City resident, a homeowner, and a mother. In August, with bravery and vulnerability in each hand, hundreds of Culver City residents stood up and over 40 raised their voices to you in support of a lasting ceasefire resolution. Mayor McMoran reportedly said that she hadn't seen such a well-attended meeting since she was elected to council. Despite this incredible showing and continuing pleas, a ceasefire resolution has not materialized on the agenda. Why? Out of the over 43,000 Gazans who have been killed, nearly 17,000 of them have been children. Let that sink in. Seventeen thousand children. Gaza is now home to the largest cohort of child amputees in modern history.
I'm a mother of three half-Palestinian boys. I share some, not all, of what is happening in Gaza and now Lebanon with my boys. I think about this a lot, that it's a simple matter of luck that they are here and not there. But I also question, how lucky are they here if their city council does not see them? I keep a lot of the horrors I've seen to myself. The entire backside of a three-year-old's skin, from scalp to anus, from white phosphorus. A girl's legs blown off, leaving flesh shredded like broad noodles as she dangles dead from metal rebar. A young man, still connected to his hospital IVs, burned alive. What can a town across the world do? You, council members, can say that the killing has to stop. As a baseline, like the hundreds of other cities across the U.S., from Chicago, Detroit, Atlanta, to the entire state of Hawaii that have already called for a lasting ceasefire, council members tap into your courage, say to the world, "This must end." Please, vote for a ceasefire now.
Our next speaker is Steve Siegel, followed by Suzanne Haddad-Haskin. Mr. Siegel is online.
Hi, this is the, uh, I want to start with a suggestion. Consider, council might consider restarting every meeting with important public comments, uh, timing, or, uh, for people to get their comments in. The parks plan, I believe, is by November 5th. Public works by the 29th. There's a lot of proposals by the parks and public works, so residents might want to consider, um, going online and finding out the ability to, how they can make comments. And number two, um, one of the parks' recommendations or proposals is removing the paddle tennis courts on Alenda Culver. We have a large neighborhood group that has resisted this form and continue to resist this. Thousands and thousands of games are played every year, enjoyed by thousands of players. It's a high, high level of success. Moving it makes no sense. There are a few houses that are, uh, there's some noise. It's a little problematic because the plastic of paddle tennis balls makes more noise. There must be a way to abate them. Number three, this is not a campaign issue, but it is a vandalism issue. On Culver Boulevard, at least 30 signs over four occasions have been pulled out of properties and thrown into the streets. It's a very, very low-character thing. Those signs were all from, those signs were all Vera Renteria and Janine. So obviously, it wasn't supported by those candidates that threw the signs in the street. So the other candidates shouldn't really check their supporters. Number four, um, there's a 500-foot, I believe, limit, or sorry, um, uh, you send out notice to people 500 feet from a development. That should be increased substantially. A lot of people don't know about large-scale developments that are being proposed and put in. For instance, the 500-unit building over on, um-
Our next speaker is Suzanne Haddad-Haskin, followed by Judy Sherman.
Good evening. Elected officials are to represent the constituents. Constituents are the voice of community. This community is telling me in the lawn sign declarations that science is real, women's rights are human rights, and no human is illegal. That I don't matter or qualify as a human because that would require those considerations to apply to me. My family and friends are not worthy of aid, food, safety, education. Their lives don't matter. This community thrives on the groupthink that they are both democratic and progressive based on bumper sticker morality. You have all been lazy in assessing information and cowardly in real conversations. You have hidden behind certain community leaders and institutions while taking advantage of others who we are commanded to live at peace with our neighbors. You are quick to stand with in error and long to sit in your reflection because deferring action will get you to the finish line of the elections. We are not short in memory, and we are deeply aware of our lack of value here in your community. There are no statistics tabulating the loss this genocide has incurred or the quickly-expanding regional war worth listing for your education because you would have to agree to the premise that Palestinian lives, Arab lives, and Muslim lives actually mattered. We do not.
Our next speaker is Judy Sherman, followed by Marcy Bond. Judy is online. Judy, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
5700 Hanum Project on November 11th, which is after the election and prior to the swearing-in of the new city council, and that we do not know who will win. What we do know is that the mayor, vice mayor, and councilperson Puzza have all expressed their view that there should be equitable distribution of the 3,341 units the city is required to build by 2029. Or as the vice mayor had expressed to the Fox Hill Neighborhood Association Board last year, that no one neighborhood should be burdened by most of the requirement. Based on this irresponsible decision to put the 300-unit-per-acre density on the south side of Slauson, the city knew that developers would flock here, as they have. Where presently, there are almost 3,000 units of housing proposed in the densest housing area of Culver City, namely Fox Hills. If you vote to approve this 5700 Hanum Project, you will essentially be going against your words and most likely opening up the floodgates for the other four developers to have their projects approved. In addition, councilperson Vera has seemed empathetic, so please also feel free to vote against this project as well. There is shock in the community as we are being assaulted with the overdevelopment plea that we are facing. So if you at all care about being ethical and acting on your words, please vote a no on this 5700 project on November 11th. The trust level at this point in Fox Hills is sub-zero when it comes to this Culver City government. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Marcy Bond, followed by Polly Stenberg.
Good evening, council. Go Dodgers. I am up here today to actually speak about the BPAC wanting to push through to tear out our, part of our urban forest on Culver Boulevard between Alenda and Overland in order to put in a protected bike lane. I, I can't see tearing out mature trees that are our urban forest, that help keep us cool, that help convert CO2 to oxygen being a good idea when you're talking about the environment. And also, I just wanted to announce that on November 21st, we are having a special Parks and Recs meeting all about the plunge policies. I'm not, I'm not speaking as an official Parks and Recs commissioner. I'm just letting people know that if you want to get up and speak and talk about what is important to you as far as how the plunge is being run, we will be at the senior center, and it starts at 7:30. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Polly Stenberg, followed by Ron Basilian.
Hi. Unfortunately, Polly wasn't able to come today, and she wasn't able to call in either. But she sent in a voice message that I'm going to play.
Good evening. My name is Polly Stenberg. I am a proud Culver City Jew. I'm a mom. Tonight represents another night that I speak before this council body demanding that you join the international calls for an immediate and permanent mutual ceasefire to save lives. It is so critical that you make this statement, that you stand on the right side of history, that you do not ignore your community members pleading, pleading with you to save lives, to support the mental health of the community, to speak out against all forms of hate, including anti-Arab and anti-Muslim hate. Antisemitism and Islamophobia are two sides of the same coin. Please speak out. Please demand a ceasefire. It is the least that you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Basilian, followed by Jean Black. Mr. Basilian, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, hi, council. I wanted to discuss the vandalism of the lawn signs that's been going on for the Vera Renteria and Woznarski signs. I'm only mentioning it because it seems to be one side. And, you know, this is not hearsay or conjecture. We have documentary evidence. We have security cam footage. We've supplied police reports to Culver City PD. This is now, you know, criminal investigation. We'd like to find the perpetrators. And I would hope that this council, which has a duty to provide orderly elections, can make some kind of remark condemning this. This isn't the first time. If you'll recall, in my opinion, this wave of vandalism is worse than 2020. So I would very much like to hear a statement. Kind of glad I'm not there because I don't know how safe I'd feel in those council chambers making these remarks. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jean Black, followed by Jared Bailey.
Good evening. Culver City has been a leader in creating options for people living on the streets to move indoors or at least into secure shelter. However, I am concerned that we're focusing too much on interim solutions and not enough on permanent housing. Looking at the most recent figures from the city's homeless reporting dashboard, only two people from Home Key Interim Housing have been placed in permanent housing as of June. Wellness Village is an amazing first step for people who aren't ready to come indoors, but a tent isn't permanent housing. In April, May, and June, three people from Wellness Village moved into Home Key Interim Housing, and one found permanent housing. No one staying in a leased motel room found permanent housing in April, May, or June. I realize we're still in the first year of operating these programs and learning what works. But ultimately, the interim programs have to be judged on whether people achieve permanent housing, and they can only do that if affordable housing is available. That's why I wanted to bring a funding opportunity to your attention. As you know, Prop 1, the Behavioral Health Services Program, was approved in March of 2024. But you may not know that it includes more than $2 billion in funding for Home Key Plus. Like the original program, Home Key Plus emphasizes acquisition and rehab of existing buildings that can be converted quickly into permanent, affordable housing. And HCD also has supplemental funding available for supportive services. If the owner of the Ramada Inn next door to our current Home Key projects were to be interested in selling, Home Key Plus could be a great opportunity for Culver City. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jared Bailey, followed by Zach Norwood. Mr. Bailey, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Counsel. My name is Jared Bailey. I'm a Culver City resident of 10 years. I'm a video game developer, and I am here because I've been to Culver City City Council meetings for what feels like forever now. And I've been to multiple Iraq meetings asking for this council to hear the concerns of the community with regard to the ongoing genocide in Gaza. Last week at Iraq, we reached a decision to have Member McBride come and address this council in hopes that we could have a community conversation on November 19th. Please, vote for this community conversation so we can talk amongst the community, hear each other's points of views, find common ground, and figure a way forward amidst this ongoing genocide. Please, vote for this. It is the simplest thing you can do. It costs you nothing. It is a simple vote of yes, have a community conversation. The cost is nothing, but the impact, the potential impact for the healing and the camaraderie that could be fostered from an event like this would be tremendous. Please, find it within your heart. Please find it within your hearts and your souls to consider voting for this on November 19th. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Zach Norwood, followed by Nas Sola. Not seeing them in chambers or online. Our next speaker is Nas Sola. Not seeing them in chamber or online. Our next speaker is Avram Stern, followed by Majid Harb. Not seeing them online either, or in council chambers. Majid Harb, followed by Ken Kenji.
Hello. Almost like 10 months ago, Congressman Messi said in a public interview that every congressman has a mentor, a Zionist mentor. What does that say to our democracy? I think we lost America, really. I mean, if every congressman has a mentor that he has to approve any decision made, basically, then some foreign country control our Congress, basically. That's why it's very incumbent upon you, upon the local government, to act. Otherwise, we lost America. We lost this dream of a humanity that's called America. All of us, we came here because it's the land of freedom. Now, we are occupied. We need another Fourth of July, really. I mean, because actually, I mean, for the last 10 months, no person has ever questioned what Congressman Messi said. Isn't that amazing? Isn't this amazing? So we are occupied. The issue is bigger than Gaza. Gaza is the symptom of the illness that we have. We are occupied. Our money is being filed through those agents of the Israeli government that constitute the US Congress, basically. And they are just funding out our money, our money.
Major, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Ken Kenji.
And members of the public, I want to take this time. We're going to call a few more speakers, so that you are ready to come up to the podium when your name is called.
Our next speakers are Melissa Sanders, Lenny Kay, Brian Sanders, Lori Horn, Connor P., Jody Evans, Kevin Whelan, Sarah Deek, Amelia Hall, and Beth Lane. Not seeing Ken Kenji in chambers or online. Our next speaker is Melissa Sanders. Melissa, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll try to get through a bunch of things now quickly. Thank you guys for moving ahead with Move. Myself and many people in my organization are thrilled that they can drive through Culver City again. Cute ballerina, sorry it has to go down this evil, horrible hill now. And please do not remove mature trees or greenery for any bike lanes. I think we need to reassess what it means to be climate-friendly and environmentally-friendly, and do things that will be of immediate impact to the city and the community and the surrounding areas. A bike lane is certainly not going to do that, but planting more trees and more greenery absolutely will. I am really upset and disturbed by what I'm hearing from most of the speakers this evening. You all need to do a little more research and history lessons. October 7th is why we're in this mess. And the fact that none of you have mentioned that, none of you have mentioned the hostages, and keep acting as if the poor Gazans are the only people that matter is really disturbing. And I really wish that you all would recognize the pain and suffering that other people are going through. The Hamas started. This is because of October 7th, a terrorist act. And the hostages are still being held, and you're ignoring that.
We're going to circle back to Avram Stern. Mr. Stern, you've been unmuted.
Can you? Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Good evening. My name is Avraham Stern. I'm a Jewish American. My roots run through Boyle Heights, Israel. And before that, Austria, Hungary, Ukraine, and Russia. My family lives right here in Culver. I'm here to express deep sorrow and outrage over the Culver City Council failing to pass ceasefire resolution, here to condemn the racism and xenophobia of the council regarding the genocide in Palestine, raging for over a year now, a genocide that America is funding. Generations of millions of Jews, secular and religious, are staunchly against the Israeli government and the racist political ideology behind it, Zionism. Genocide is not a Jewish value, and Israel does not represent Jewish people. Last year, this council released a resolution in support of Israel, a foreign government disguised as condemnation of anti-Semitism. This resolution amplifies Islamophobia and anti-Palestinian hate, which has resulted in countless violent hate crimes on Muslim Americans of last year. By falsely attributing support for Israel and apartheid state as support for Jewish people while Israel carries out genocide, the city has amplified anti-Semitism as well. And by not showing any support for our Arab, Palestinian, or Muslim community members, the city has pitted Jewish and Arab communities against each other, amplifying tensions and encouraging conflict. In 2018 and 2019, white supremacists entered American synagogues in Pittsburgh and San Diego and opened fire on Jewish Americans. I don't remember Culver City's resolutions against anti-Semitism then, which means Culver City doesn't care about anti-Semitism. Culver City only cares about Israel, a foreign government, and Culver City doesn't want to call out anti-Semitism from Christian white supremacists. It would rather frame Muslims. We in the Jewish and Arab-American community have had enough of the hypocrisy. Earlier in the meeting, the council expressed support for the UN and concern for climate change. While Israel has declared war on the UN and regularly murders UN peacekeepers. Also, Israel's bombing of Gaza is the equivalent of nuclear bombs worth of ordinance every few weeks. This is ecocide. This is causing climate change, and this is not sustainable. And if you care about climate--
Our next speaker is Lenny Kay, followed by Brian Sanders. Lenny, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Hello, council members. Good evening. I am coming to you today as an immigrant, a United States citizen, a first responder, and a Jew. I am a descendant of Holocaust survivors, Jewish people whose memories and teachings have shaped my worldview and my values. I'm here to urge you, as elected members and representatives of our city, to move immediately towards a resolution toward a ceasefire in Palestine and a cessation of investment in the state of Israel. Mirrors of the horrific treatment of the Jewish people, my family, are seen plainly in the genocide of Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank, which is advocated for by the United States and defended at the most granular level by city councils that sit on their hands, like the one I am addressing, paralyzed in fear of accusations of anti-Semitism by Zionists. This genocidal project did not begin on October 7th and does not represent the Jewish people. It is a denigration in the face of my great-grandparents and the other 6 million Jews, Romani, disabled and queer people, and countless others affected to have a fascist state justify its genocide in the name of my people. This is exacerbated by the support by a nation that adopted me and my family, an unwilling local representation. The effects of genocide do not cease with the end of a war. They shape the lives of those that survive the butchery for generations. The time spent by my elected leaders ignoring pleas for a complete severance of collaboration with the government of Israel's actions is time wasted and time that is not and was not granted to those in Palestine, Lebanon, currently displaced, traumatized, erased by bombs, dropped by the support of the United States government.
Followed by Lori Horn. Mr. Sanders, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Brian Sanders. I'm a resident here in Culver City. And first thing I'd like to mention is, yes, it's true. There is a plan to remove trees on Culver Boulevard. It is one of the proposals. I recommend that everybody pay attention to that. Two, I'd like to commend the council for their progress on extending the shared bus and bike lanes in Culver City. Great job. Three, I'd like to recommend that everybody take a look at the articles written about news items in Culver City, And last thing about what's been talked about a lot tonight. In addition to being a resident, I am also Jewish. I'm a Zionist. I come from a Holocaust survivor family. I'm a bit surprised to hear the hate speech here in council, given that there was already a statement at the beginning of public comment. There have been a number of comments tonight from the public that are actually hate speech. You know, a ceasefire would be great. We should ask Hezbollah to stop shooting missiles from Lebanon. We should ask Hamas to stop shooting missiles from Gaza. We should ask the Iranian regime to stop shooting missiles from Iran. We should ask the Houthis to stop shooting missiles from Yemen. And of course, return the hostages. There's your ceasefire. The language in these proposed resolutions that have been making their way around the United States are carefully crafted, they sound reasonable, but they distort reality.
I think our next speaker is Lori Horn, followed by Connor P. Lori, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. My name is Lori. I am a Jewish American, Culver City resident. I'm a Democrat. I'm progressive. And I'm so, so offended by how so many of the speakers this evening presume to-- just presume to include me in their position and to include many other people who are not there in the room. I'm concerned how many people who are speaking are actually Culver City citizens. I'm concerned about the tone and the ad hominem attacks on our government representatives. I'm concerned that we don't ask for decorum when people get out of what's reasonable. I'm concerned about some of the people's speech, who I do think has bled into hate speech. Genocide itself is a problematic term. It's a legal definition, and it has not been legally deemed to be a genocide. So that's already problematic. But even if we let that go, Bibleists-- and I'm feeling really uncomfortable at the tolerance of speakers coming and repeating them, even as they do so emotionally. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Connor P., followed by Jody Evans.
I'm afraid you, although I find no fault with folks expressing their feelings. I'm just here to ask that you pass the community discussion on November 19th. A few folks, I've seen their names on Facebook. I haven't had the pleasure of corresponding with them or speaking with them personally. But I think what we have in Culver City is a lot of people talking past each other. And I wish some of my Jewish brothers and sisters who have spoken tonight would be able to come to that community forum and speak with their fellow Culver City residents, and speak to them, and understand where they're coming from. So I think that's why it's so important, because we have this level of dialogue that's vitriolic. And it doesn't need to be. We need to see each other as human beings. And I think a conversation is where that starts. So please pass that for November 19th. Thanks.
Next speaker is Jody Evans, followed by Kevin Whelan.
Hello. You've heard some really passionate voices that have been speaking from their heart about the reality of the world we live in right now. And you've been listening to this for many months. And this is about you. This night is about you. Where do you stand in a moment in history where a genocide is happening? And yes, it has legally been proved at the International Court of Justice in the Convention on Genocide. So it's not to be denied. Unfortunately, denial is not going to work. Just last week, President Biden had to apologize, apologized for less than what is happening right now. The truth will come out. The truth is what is happening. It is not opinions. It is not bullying back. The truth is happening, and you have heard it from people tonight and in the past. But this is about you. Where do you stand? When your grandchildren say to you, "Where were you during a genocide?" This is what you need to decide tonight. Is I put up a resolution, and I voted to say ceasefire, and I voted not to be invested in that genocide? Because this is really just about you. You are going to make that vote. You will be accountable to it.
Our next speaker is Kevin Whelan, followed by Sarah Deek.
Good evening, city councilors, and thank you for listening to my testimony. So about 2 and 1/2 blocks from here, my daughter is in her apartment on Madison Ave. And my daughter's Central American and has faced a lot of trauma in her life because of racism. And after October 7th last year, she was waking up repeatedly with nightmares because she was on Instagram and she was seeing the violence, the transparent violence of, yes, the genocide. And while I really, as a father, I want to protect her, at the same time, I think that's what we all need to feel. That's what we all need to see. We can't hide from this kind of violence. This is a genocide that comes since 1948. There's been an occupation. There's been an apartheid from Israel. And the US government is giving Israel $4 billion a year in military aid. This year, it was $18 billion. As a speaker said before, each plane that Israel has used to bomb Gaza has come from the United States, each and every one. I'm 62 years old, and I lived through the anti-apartheid movement in South Africa. One of the keystones of getting rid of apartheid in South Africa was local bodies like this voting against apartheid, voting to divest from apartheid. And I hope you all have the courage that it takes to do the same with this apartheid and this genocide today. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Deek, followed by Nas Sola.
Hello. I'm Sarah. I recently received a business tax certificate from the city of Culver. Right now, I'm a consultant engineer for the landfills. Before that, I did fire restoration efforts across California. And before that, I worked for the railroad and for a nuclear power plant. And most importantly, I'm Palestinian-American. My nieces were born in Palestine. They're 2 and 4 years old. Every day, I've been completely consumed in the news because-- Every day, I've been completely consumed in the news because I recognize my family and the people online. Every time I look at my nieces, I see those kids in Gaza. Every time I see those kids in Gaza, I see my nieces. And so, and there are countless amount of nameless children who've never been permitted to enter into the record. And so it's so humiliating not having any space to discuss this and having to pretend to be removed from this entire situation for the past year. So please vote to pass for the community event in November 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nas Sola, followed by Amelia Hall. Nas, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm responding to the woman who said that it's bad of us to presume that this is a genocide. I think it's a presumptuous of her to think that we are presuming. I don't need to presume about a genocide. I survived a genocide in Bosnia in the 90s. Bosnia has a population of 6 million. 2 million of us were displaced. I'm one of them. That's 33%. In Gaza, the population are only 2 million. 98% of them are displaced. That's three times the amount. In Bosnia, conservative estimate of the deaths is 150,000 in four years. That's 2.5% of the population. In Gaza, 50,000 deaths, conservative estimate, not counting the people under the rubble or the people that can't be recognized. That's 2.5% of the population. Exact same numbers. They achieved in mere months what it took four years to do to our people. In Ukraine, in three years, there's 11,500 deaths, and this government accused Putin of committing a genocide seven days in. And we are 13 months later, and you're sitting here wondering what it is. Then you tell me. If it's not, what I'm seeing is not a genocide, then you tell me what it is. Then you tell me what it is. Plus the ceasefire resolution, this is a largely symbolic gesture, the fact that we have to beg and cry and scream for you to consider even doing this is ridiculous. And the only thing that can speak to it is
I want to go ahead and read the last of our speakers for this portion. I want to remind everyone that if you signed up to speak after the start of this item, you'll be called to speak later during the second portion of this agenda item, or for items not on the agenda. Our next speaker is Amelia Hall, followed by Beth Lane, Travis Morgan, Sarah Blau, Daniel McFarjin, Helen Sklar, Jeff Cooper, and Cynthia Anderson Barker.
I'd like to wait until the mayor comes back. Okay. Hello, my name is Amelia Hall. I live 10 blocks from this building. I'm a local mom of one, and I have one more on the way. As a local constituent, I'm asking you to please join the cities of Santa Monica, Burbank, Pasadena, El Monte, Alhambra, and many more locally in passing a ceasefire resolution and standing against ethnic cleansing. 76 years ago, my own father was ethnically cleansed from Palestine. He is a Nakba survivor, and he lived in a multi-ethnic village along with Christians, Muslims, Jews, and others, other religions. Everyone was living together. And then in March 1948, the Haganah came, the Zionist paramilitary came to his village, and they separated the Muslim men and the Christian men from the Jewish men, and they killed five of my father's village members. So they fled. Today, my father's village sits in ruins. It's a national park just an hour north of Gaza. My cousins in Jordan are still refugees. I'm in exile. My son Abel is in exile. We don't have Israeli citizenship. We're not welcome back to the land that we lived in for thousands of years. However, if we were Jewish, we would be allowed right back there. If anyone in this room who's Jewish can go and become a citizen of Israel, but I can't. My son can't. We've been robbed of that because of racism. My ask is for people here to learn the past in order to understand what is happening today. The Israeli government is running an apartheid state in the West Bank. There's no denying that. It is well documented. This is on the Amazon Top 10
Our next speaker is Beth Lane, followed by Travis Morgan. Beth, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor McMoRan and council members. I'm Beth Lane, Board President of Rancho Higera Neighborhood Association adjacent to the Culver Studios and Amazon Lot. Just wanted to speak tonight about, we're still awaiting some updates and installations to complete our neighborhood traffic management plan, Phase 1, which, if you look back in the records, has been almost in nine years in the making. We still are getting heavy cut through on Higera and crazy speeding up and down into Boulevard because there are no speed cushions in place. And the pushback of watching other projects all around us in the downtown community being completed first has made the residents very restless as to, what about us? So tonight, I wanted to address that, as well as a new project adjacent from Rancho Higera called, I believe, the South Robertson Complete Street Project under Andrew Maximus' project management and supervision. This project could impact our community negatively, but we have not been contacted by the staff or the developers. And I do realize, like someone mentioned earlier tonight, there's a 500-foot new building mail notice requirement from developers and hopefully will get revised to be a larger outreach. 500 feet only covers about a third of our 10-block community. So we don't always get notices about going to the committees for the bicycle and mobility and traffic subcommittees to speak out as part of the feedback, but we want to be reached out to as a community separate from these other committees that we may not be able to attend their meetings to give our feedback. We can be reached on our website at rhna.cc. Again, it's rhna.cc, which is Rancho Higera Neighborhood Association dot cc for Culver City. They can find our email address there, and please do reach out to us. We have a board that would like to know what is going on. Right now, my eyes are crossed looking at a PL stripe for the South Robertson project. I have no idea what the engineer has designed, and I think in January of next year, they will
Our next speaker is Travis Morgan, followed by Sarah Blau.
I bring concerns about council direction regarding commissions, boards, and committees. And my ask is for nodding heads to adopt clearer ethics standards regarding ex parte directions to staff regarding CBCs. So I come with two recent examples. So one was that the B-PAC asked on multiple occasions with nodding heads in our agendized meeting for Move 2.0 plans to be brought to us for review, and we were denied that on multiple times. We were not allowed to put it on our agenda. We were not allowed to have staff present that to us. I did even speak, because we did have a B-PAC meeting before the council was to vote on it, with one of the council members asking if we could please review these plans. And the council member, in his words, said it's a secret plan and that it would only be reviewed by staff and by council before it would come to council for a vote, that it would not be presented. He then told me that the B-PAC needs to get in line with the council majority. And I find that to be very disturbing language that is clearly seeking to intimidate. The second example is that we asked on multiple occasions with nodding heads that we be able to review the kiosks and have those who were interested in presenting to city council come and present to us the kiosks. And we did this in multiple of our meetings for the last several months, and we were also denied. We then had to create a special meeting just for the kiosks before this meeting tonight, and we were told that Economic Development Manager Elaine Garrity Warner was instructed not to attend and not to present any information to the B-PAC before this meeting. And we were told that this was instruction from council. However, I sat in this meeting, the entire public meeting, and I did not hear that instruction from council. So I would like to know where that instruction came from and whether that was ex parte instruction to staff. I would also like to know which staff is telling the other staff members not to attend meetings where we have purview. We are seeking to complete our mission as a B-PAC, and I feel like we are being directly blocked from having this come to the public. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Blau, followed by Daniel McFarjin, Helen Sklar, Jeff Cooper, and Cynthia Anderson Barker. Go ahead.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Sarah Blau. I'm a resident of Culver City, a public health professional, and a descendant of Holocaust survivors. I'm here to show support for the Equity and Human Rights Advisory Committee, or ERAC, in organizing a community forum as soon as possible, meeting November 19th, 2024, to discuss the humanitarian crisis in Gaza. As Jews, our tradition teaches us that every life is precious, every person is an entire world, and every death is a world extinguished. As a descendant of Holocaust survivors, I feel that it is my moral imperative to do everything I can to put an end to the ongoing genocide in Gaza. When I spoke to ERAC last week, I read testimonies from medical professionals in Gaza recounting the atrocities they had witnessed and the unbearable conditions they have been working in for the last year. I was reassured to see committee members nodding, making eye contact, and in some cases even crying. It was more humanity in three minutes than I've witnessed over the three times I have come before this city council. Members, you have the opportunity to do the right thing tonight. Please stand on the side of humanity like your colleagues in ERAC unanimously did last week. Thank you.
Next speaker is Daniel McFarjin, followed by Helen Sklar.
Good evening, members of the council. This is now, I believe, the fourth time that I came before you to speak. Last first time was on August 12th. Between now and then, tens of thousands of Palestinian men, women, and children, as well as civilians in Lebanon, and now in Iran are threatened. Last time I talked to you, I told you I was a Jewish resident of Culver City, and one big thing that's really been important to me my whole life, the concept of kuno lam, that we all individually and as a group have an obligation to do what we can to make the world a better place than when we came here. The members of the ERAC committee, after many, many hours, showed that they are able to do what is the bare minimum in order to make that a possibility. Now, I stand here before you. I am sympathetic, Vice Mayor O'Brien, that your hearing is affected, but I think of the Palestinian kids who are haunted by the sounds of bombs dropping, buildings being demolished in seconds. Mr. Goran, I also, I believe that people should have access to dental strips, but I also believe that there are tens of thousands of Palestinian men, women, and children who don't have access to basic food, water, clean water, basic hygiene products. I think it's a tragedy, but we now are at a crossroads because we're over a year out, and I now have the opportunity to ask you to do one thing, and that is to let us talk about it. Please vote for the meeting on November 16th.
Our next speaker is Helen Sklar, followed by Jeff Cooper. Our next speaker is Jeff Cooper.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Everything I wanted to say has already been said a number of times, so I'll try to say something different. I want to appeal your humanity and ask you to open up your hearts to save the lives of our human brothers and sisters in the Middle East. Saving lives at home and abroad are interconnected. We're not going to solve our social problems through war. I'm here today asking the Culver City Council to pass a resolution that calls for an immediate ceasefire and a permanent peace in Gaza. Every human life is precious, and I saw that when I lived as a Jew openly in Gaza in 1990 to 94. I saw horrendous violence, especially directed at children, and I'm talking about children five, six, and seven years old by the Israeli military. I want all of this to end, and the only way we can end it is start by having a ceasefire. So no more bloodshed anywhere. Jews as well as Palestinians are dying. So those that care about Jews have to understand that if you want them to live, stop the war now. All human lives are precious. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker for this portion is Cynthia Anderson Barker. Not seeing them in chambers or online. That was our final speaker, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who spoke. We're moving on now to a receipt and filing of the several pages of correspondence to be received by the deadline. We have a motion.
Can members please make a motion and a second again?
Or vote motion, or make a motion? Oh, there it is.
We have a motion from Councilmember Vera, a second from Vice Mayor O'Brien to receive and file the correspondence for this meeting. Please vote. All members have voted. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to take the agenda in the order that it's stated. Moving on now to consent. Do we have any speakers, City Clerk, on any consent items?
One for C15.
Okay. Councilmember Vera, any items?
C7 and 8.
Councilmember Allison?
C13.
Councilmember Puzo?
No, ma'am.
Vice Mayor O'Brien?
C10 and C15. We have a speaker for
10 and 15?
10 and 15, yeah.
Okay. And I wanted to just ask a quick question about C4. So let's do, try to do them in order, so 4, 7, 8, 10, 13, and 15. Does that sound right, City Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Can we start with 4?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, and I don't need a staff report because it's very clear what's being asked, but my question is, how much remaining dollars do we have in this fund?
So if this off-cycle grant request is approved, then we will have $5,925 left in the contingency fund if the $3,000 is approved.
Got it. I saw that in the staff report. We just wanted to confirm. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Not seeing any. Yes, please. Yes, please. Is there anyone from, I assume, Public Works or maybe Planning?
Actually, Troy Vangelo from Advanced Planning.
Wait. Yes. 7.
Online.
Troy, thank you. Just, I just wanted to, if you can go over briefly what the, the item's about. I had a couple of questions are from some residents up in, actually Hayden and Fox Hills, and weren't really sure what it was. I just wanted just to clarify both of them. No, no real questions for me, but just for the public's sake.
Sure, right. So as you know, we recently adopted our general plan, and in that plan, we, I'm sorry, let me introduce myself first. Troy Vangelo, Advanced Planning Manager. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. So what we have before us today is we're looking to get authority to execute a couple of contracts with consultants to hire for specific plans. So again, backtracking, our general plan was recently adopted, and with that plan, we identified a number of special study areas, and two of those are the Hayden tract and the Fox Hills neighborhood. And through this effort, what we're looking to do is go back and do more of a focused plan for both of these areas to help out with new growth, new transition, new change, and really develop focused plans for both of these neighborhoods. So that's the item we're, we're bringing forward today.
Okay. All right, thank you. I didn't have any, yeah, any other specific questions. There's some concerned residents who are wondering about development and whatnot and what this is actually doing, and it goes, I think, pardon me, to the meeting we had a couple of weeks ago about making sure that we do specific site plans for areas as it, as it pertains to development. So that's what this would be about, correct?
Right, so it'd be taking a holistic look at the neighborhoods and a zoomed-in focus on, on what's happening with the development.
And, and so this is a result from the housing element being certified, right? A certified element, or the general plan, rather, but it's all stemmed from the housing element that was sent in in 2022, correct?
Right, that's a component of it. So we did have our recently adopted and certified housing element, which came a little bit before the rest of the general plan, and the general plan established the land use for these neighborhoods, which is sort of the broad strokes of what you're allowed to do as far as development. Since then, we've also updated our zoning code to provide more development standards for these areas throughout the whole city. And again, this effort is going to be a more focused approach to development in both of these neighborhoods.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
So I also had, was going to pull 7. I'm curious about, I know this is primarily for RFPs in terms of working with folks who work on specific plans like this. Do you have an estimate of what the timeline is going to look like for these projects? I know that some of it was alluded to when we did the general plan process, but we were, you know, focused on that and making sure that was approved. So now that-
To kick off as soon as possible. So if approved, we would work on finalizing and executing the contracts for these consultants. And the timeline we're looking at would be to bring it forward for adoption in the first quarter of '26. And that is for numerous reasons. One, we have development coming through. We want to, you know, put these parameters in place, but then also we have potential grant funding with some timelines attached to it, which we would want to adhere to.
And just to clarify on that, if there's, if there's proposed development in, in the pipeline, as was mentioned, I think, by a public commenter of about 3,000 units specifically for Fox Hills, that I would assume that that would be grandfathered in because it was during the time when the zoning permitted it?
Right, depending on the type of application, some developments use what's called SB 330 application, which freezes in the development standards at the time. So those projects would be processed under the current zoning code and regulations.
Do we have an estimation, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but do we have an estimation of how many of those developments are SB 330 right now?
There's a number of them. I'm thinking of at least two or three. And I do know that some came through just-
Recently.
Recently, yeah. So there, some SB 330 tried to lock in the older, pre-old general plan, so we have some of those we're working with as well.
Got it, got it. I appreciate your clarification. Councilmember Erickson?
Yes, it clarified my head a little. We heard a speaker earlier from, from the Fox Hills area talking about all these units. The 100 units per acre were set by the housing element. Isn't that correct? That the state then approved, and that sort of locked us in for zoning and general plan. We just had to follow that. Is, is that how it worked?
Right, so the first thing we did was, prior to adopting the general plan and the zoning, we had a state deadline, and we brought the housing element forward, which did include densities throughout the whole city, including the 100 units per acre in Fox Hills. And when we got that approved and certified, that was our roadmap to move forward with, and that's what we built our general plan around, is implementation of that certified housing element.
So I want to clarify for the speaker, who has been sending emails about this also, that it wasn't this council here who set that 100 acres, 100 units per acre limit. It was the prior council. So that's when all those discussions should have been happened, but that sort of sailed through. Anyway, I want to, so it's not, doesn't make much sense to, to chase my colleagues because several of them were not on the council when the 100 acre, 100 units per acre limit was set. It was the prior council, and I voted no.
And just to clarify, when was the housing element certified for us?
I'd have to look at my notes, but I want to say '22, 2022.
Okay, thanks. And there were no amendments from 2022 when we initially had it certified?
Right, we have not amended anything with it.
Okay.
I believe, just a quick piggyback, Councilmember Erickson and myself both voted no on it, and I think that's what the issue is with a lot of the Fox Hills areas, the 100 units per acre. There was other three councilmembers that are no longer, one of them is still with us, the mayor, who voted yes on it, as well as two councilmembers that are no longer with us. So to, I'll leave it at that. I know myself and Councilmember Erickson voted no on it. Thank you. Thank you, Troy.
I don't have time to go through my notes, and it's late, but it's my recollection. There were some changes to infill zoning in 2023. I don't have time to go through it right now. I don't know if you can confirm that or not, but I'm sure there'll be many opportunities for us to talk about equitable distribution of housing in our community, which I have always advocated for. So thank you so much for this, for this clarification on the timeline for Hayden and Fox Hills. And can we move on to C-8?
So this is a related item, C-8.
It's the same, one and the same for me, so I think the one explains the other one, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Unless there's-
I didn't pull this item. Okay, can we move on to 10, please? Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm Demetri, Director of Public Works. Would you like a staff report?
Just a high level.
Sure, very well. This item before you tonight is the approval of a memorandum of agreement between our city and the city of Los Angeles, County of Los Angeles, and the Los Angeles County Flood Control District for the administration and cost sharing for implementing the coordinated integrated monitoring program, CIMP, and watershed management program known as WIMP, WMP, for the Marina del Rey watershed. On December 28th, 2012, the Los Angeles County Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit, known as MS4 Permit, became effective in accordance with the Clean Water Act. Culver City takes a regional approach regarding compliance by partnering with other agencies within the watershed to accomplish annual reporting, water quality monitoring, project implementation, and other tasks. The Marina del Rey Water Management Group is comprised of Culver City, County of Los Angeles, and the Flood Control District, and the city of Los Angeles. Most of the Culver City, most of Culver City lies in the Bayona Creek watershed, which is managed by the Bayona Creek WMG led by the city of Los Angeles. This MOU has a particular scope, and it includes the following: monitoring services. It also includes annual reporting to various government regulatory agencies, and it also includes contract administration. Our contribution to this effort is $157,000 and some change, and it, and this covers our contribution to this effort over the next five fiscal years. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So after reading over this and being a fairly regular user of the Bayona Creek bike path, I've, I've been going through a frustrating, long, many, many months-long process of trying to get regular cleanup and maintenance of not just the bike path, but the, the space, the, the slope above the bike path. And mayor, at the end of the meeting, when, when we typically request agendizing items, I'd like to pursue agendizing direction to the staff to enter into a memorandum of agreement to have cost sharing similar to this, to implement regular maintenance, trash cleanup, trees and shrubbery, graffiti abatement, things like that, to have staff pursue that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Will do.
Thank you. Next item?
I don't need a staff report. I just have some questions. I don't know if any of my colleagues need a staff report, but since I pulled that item, I guess.
I'd be happy to provide a brief one.
Oh, we good. We, we are already at five minutes after 10. My question is really this, and it goes back to, many years ago, we had those Christmas lights out here on, on Culver Boulevard, and we had a company who was maintaining them not. We had problems, DBA had problems getting that company to actually maintain them. We got sort of half-lit trees and things like that, and took them weeks to come and fix it. And I know the, DBA now has a firm that seems to be maintaining and, and actually responding very, very quickly. So my question is, with the contract we have now, you are proposing, staff are proposing for the media park, what is the expected maintenance response? Do we have that in the contract? Because I don't think, you know, if we get half a palm tree that is lit and the other half is not, and so on, it takes three weeks for that to be fixed. It's, it doesn't look good. So I'm just wondering what, because there was nothing in the staff report that explained the maintenance side.
Absolutely. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name's Luis Gonzalez. I am the city's Economic Development Project Manager, and absolutely anticipated as part of the scope of work and as part of the selection of St. Nick's Holiday Lighting and Decor. That was one of the questions, and their anticipated answer is 24 to 48 hours. We are, the expectation is closer to 24 hours, but it can take up to 48 hours. But, yeah, and then that includes quarterly maintenance, so rewrapping the trees at Media Park every, every quarterly, every three months.
Okay, thank you. That, that was my question. I, I want to ensure that we would have good, good quality of, we spend the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
And 10, sorry, C-15. Speaker?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Ken Powell. I'm the fire chief. I also believe Diane Chain, the chief transportation officer, is also online for any questions you may have.
Are there questions on 15?
I had one question.
Okay.
Chief, just curious what happens to the decommissioned ladder truck?
Typically, what we've done in the past, and Diane can chime in after I'm done speaking, but I believe they all go to auction, just like any other city vehicle that we decommission.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Does anyone want to hear from the speaker?
Sure.
Our speaker for C-15 is Melissa Sanders. Melissa, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
I thought I signed up for C-7, but okay, hang on. The, oh, it was just the fire truck. I was just worried that, as usual, anything that was, you know, remotely first responder, Yasmine and Freddie would deny. So I was just trying to make a point of making sure that, you know, we have what we need to keep our entire community safe 24/7. Thank you.
Can we have a motion for consent items, 1 through 17? Thanks.
We have a motion by, oops, by Council, Vice Mayor O'Brien, and a second by Councilmember Vera, to approve the entire consent calendar. Please vote. All members have voted. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing. All right, and we have a motion to receive and file the affidavits of publication and posting of notices and correspondence received in response to our public hearing notices.
We have a motion by Councilmember Puzza, a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously.
May we have a staff report?
Certainly. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Lisa Soger. We are here to, this evening, to conduct the public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR. TFR requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. 4464 Sepulveda Boulevard LP has asked that the California Municipal Finance Authority, the CMFA, be the issuer of tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $65 million. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a multifamily rental housing project located at 4460, 4464 Sepulveda Boulevard. I do want to take a brief moment to correct, for the record, the boundaries of the project, which were misstated in the staff report. The project is just southeast of the intersection of Sepulveda Boulevard and Braddock Drive. The CMFA is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, and the city of Culver City will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with- Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of T E F R A, the code, and California Government Code, Section 6500. I also want to let the council know that we have Connor O'Brien from the C M F A here tonight, in case there are any questions. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Any questions, Council Member Vera?
No questions.
Council Member Erickson?
No.
Council Member Puzza?
No mayor.
Vice Mayor?
No questions.
Okay, can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
We have a motion by Council Member Erickson, and a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien to open the public hearing. Please vote. All members have voted, the motion passes unanimously, and I believe we have four speakers.
Thank you.
Our four speakers are Emily D., Verhat H., Steve Siegel, and Helen Sklar. Our first speaker is Emily D.
So, forget it. And yeah, I'm sorry about your ears. I'm really sorry about your ears, but every time I call my family in Gaza, all I hear is the drones. But I can't call them.
Our next speaker is Verhat H. Not seeing them online or in council chamber. Our next speaker is Steve Siegel.
Thank you. What is the time, thank you, what is the time on this, please?
Three minutes. Three minutes.
All right, thank you. So regarding this project, as a very consistent user of the Y right there, I'm in that neighborhood all of the time. The neighborhood is in a rough shape right now. The Vista Motel, I'm not sure what the usage is exactly there, if it's homeless housing or what it is, I know it's L.A., but those people are wandering through the neighborhood there, sleeping on bus stops, and it's not very good. And so I don't know exactly what the usage of this new building at ninety-five units is. I have a couple of questions, I just sprint under the action. Number one, is Culver City putting money into it, separate from the sixty-five million? I heard something about five million before. If not, we shouldn't be, certainly, are we getting money to put this in? But is this, it sounds like Los Angeles locating low income, or I'm not sure who's going into the unit. Is it supportive housing into the units? Because I can anticipate much, many more problems on Sepulveda, all kinds of issues with police, et cetera. So I guess the first question is, who would be living there? Number two, why would we have to approve and have this kind of development there? There's already a problem with the Vista Motel. Another question would be, can we acquire the Vista Motel somehow, change that usage? Because it really is problematic. That neighborhood, I remember, I think it was the owner of the preschool came in, and she was just, had daunting levels of increase of prime and problems there, increased security needed, et cetera, at the preschool right near by. Why are we making our neighborhoods worse? What it commonly seems like is the west side of Culver City, west of Overland, is just seemingly put upon to host all kinds of large-scale developments and whatever it is. But I guess the main question is, if this came from a previous council majority, why are we still doing it? That previous council majority had an agenda. It was very specific, and it was against the wishes of at least ninety percent of the residents of Culver City. Their agenda should get tossed into a pile. So I guess the question is, why are we doing it? How much is it going to cost us? Why isn't someone paying the city to absorb it, if that's what it is? And this is going to be really problematic for the Y M C A, besides parking, many, many, hundreds of kids a day are in and out of the Y. Is it going to be safe for them? So again, it's, what are we doing to certain parts of our city? And what can we do to stop it? And I'm sure the residents who live behind the houses, not thrilled to say, at least they're going to have a towering building lurking over their, over their homes. I saw one was for sale the other day. So they're trying to get out, I suppose. I took sort of correction last week, last meeting, I mentioned that we were looking into having, what legal action could take against those who sued Culver City? And I meant to say that those who are on the document was regarding the stay, not the actual appeal itself. And that would be Bubba Fish on this McMole.
Thank you. Thanks. Next comment.
Our final speaker for this item is Helen Sklar, who I do not see in chamber or on Webex. That was our final speaker.
Okay, great. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
We have a motion by Council Member Vera, and a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien. Please vote. All members have voted, and that motion passes, five ayes.
Council Member Vera?
No comments on it, I'm ready to move forward.
Council Member Erickson?
Oops. Well, the, Mr. Siegel brought up a few things. One thing was the Vista Motel, which I think it's important for people to understand, that's Los Angeles. Unfortunately, we have no jurisdiction, no control over that. But I also want to let people know that Council Member Vera and myself met with the Neighborhood Association, that is actually ours, that is bordering this, and also with the L.A. residents, discussion. And we have now approached L.A. City, and I don't know if Council Member Vera wants to add more. But we are very well aware of it, we're doing what we can. It's not in Culver City, which is the problem for us, but we are trying to explain for L.A. that this is an absolutely wrong place to have a facility, like they have sort of taken over that motel and putting in people with very little securities. It's created just half a block away, there is a preschool. We would never do that in Culver City. So anyway, just want to let the speaker know that. Other than that, concern about who's going to live there, I mean, I'm saying, Tilden Terrace is a hundred percent affordable housing project. I haven't heard anyone having any, for anyone doesn't know, that's on Washington, on Washington Boulevard. It's gorgeous building, that's where Milcross Cafe is in the corner. So it's, we heard earlier from speakers that with the, how it works with what's affordable and so on, is that the requirement will, you know, be around people with making somewhere between sixty-five to ninety thousand dollars as a family are the one that's going to qualify for the affordable housing part, which I, I think is, it's our neighbors, it's our people working in our city. So I don't have that concern that the speaker voiced on this project. There's a lot of other issues with the project, a lot, but those are not concerns I have. There are others, and that we can talk about another day.
Mayor McMurray? If I may, just briefly, I think it's important for the public to understand that this item is very narrowly tailored. It isn't with regard to the project itself, and it's, we are basically a conduit for this financing that's being requested. So just so the public understands that the council isn't really considering the project itself tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Puzza?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have any questions, and I approve this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor O'Brien?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. My only question is, this the total amount for the project? No, right, feels too low.
I, I am unsure of what the total amount is, but this is just the amount that's being requested for bonds.
Okay, got it. All righty, can we have a motion?
We have a motion by Vice Mayor O'Brien, a second by Council Member Vera, to adopt the resolution to approve the issuance of the revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority to assist in the financing or refinancing of the forty-four-six-four Sepulveda Boulevard L P located in Culver City, California, and approval of the deposit of approximately nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty cents in issuance fees to the general fund. Please vote. All members have voted, and that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to A one.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. In twenty-twenty-one, excuse me, in twenty-twenty-one, the City Council directed staff to explore the potential development of a real-time, interactive, digital kiosk program that could provide information on city meetings, events, transportation services, local business directories, wayfinding, and emergency updates, amongst other things. In January twenty-twenty-two, the city issued a request for information for companies who provide these services to better understand what program, what a program in Culver City could look like. Four companies responded. Of the four companies, two companies provided outdoor kiosk prototypes, Ike and Soufa. In April twenty-twenty-three, the Economic Development Subcommittee reviewed the responses to the request for information and directed staff to schedule community meetings to get community feedback. In August twenty-twenty-three, two community meetings were held to help the community better understand the technology and whether kiosks would be an asset to the city. Both of the vendors who participated in the community meetings included a commercial advertising component as a means to fund the kiosk infrastructure and installation. Feedback from these meetings was shared with the Economic Development Subcommittee and City Council in October twenty-twenty-three. That same month, the City Council directed staff to pursue an amendment to the signed ordinance in the zoning code, which would allow for the placement of interactive digital kiosks in the public right-of-way for the purposes of providing public information and other messaging selected by the city, including commercial advertising, should the City Council wish to pursue a program in the future. In April twenty-twenty-four, the Planning Commission considered an amendment to the zoning code to make these changes. The Planning Commission voted to deny a recommendation to the City Council to approve the amendment due to unknown impacts, quantity, and citing of the kiosks. In June twenty-twenty-four, the City Council introduced the zoning code amendment with a provision to limit screen interfaces to fifteen square feet and pending a potential R F P process. In July twenty-twenty-four, the City Council approved the zoning code amendment and approved a request for proposals for an interactive digital kiosk program. The request for proposals was included as an attachment to the staff report. The R F P, as approved by City Council, was released on July eighteenth. The R F P required respondents to provide detailed information on the design, potential quantity, and citing infrastructure, installation, operation, maintenance, use, accessibility, financing, public outreach, successful case studies, advertising strategies, respondent qualifications, technology, revenue sharing, additional information related to the kiosks. The R F P also requested a proposed cost and advertising revenue strategy sharing program that provides for the kiosk's infrastructure, installation, utility costs, and ongoing maintenance to the city at no cost. Responses were due on August fifteenth. The city, through its typical notification process, notified a hundred and fifty-seven potential bidders. Staff reached out personally via email and contact forms on one site to seven kiosk vendors. Those vendors included Big Outdoor, Capital Outdoor, Ike Smart City, Meridian M Zero, Peerless A V, Red Reef, and Soufa. Forty of those hundred and fifty-seven were identified as potential bidders, and of those, thirty-nine downloaded the R F P. Of those, the city received two bids. The city's fiscal consultant, Kaiser Marston and Associates, reviewed the proposals and summarized the relevant terms of each proposal based on: the experience implementing and operating, maintaining, a manager, managing similar kiosk projects, case studies that demonstrate the company's relevant experience, a description of the technology employed by the company in the development and operation of the kiosks, and other pertinent information provided by the proposers. Interviewers with each of the proposers were conducted on September fifth to clarify the response and approach. A comparison of both respondents is summarized in the chart that was included in your staff report. And I need my glasses. Difficulty reading here. Okay. So, the first one was experience with interactive digital kiosks. Ike Smart City has deployed networks in twenty cities, operating five-hundred-and-fifty live standardized custom units. Success Mantra, which is what our other respondent, has experience with site tour and specific kiosks. They identified three potential kiosk designs. They do not have a specified program in an outdoor environment for, that's similar to what the council had asked for. Maintenance and warranty. Ike Smart City proposed a regular maintenance, five days a week, with telephone response twenty-four-seven, one day on the weekend. Success Mantra provided a three-year soft warranty on hardware and a one-year warranty on software, would be able to provide support and troubleshoot during normal business hours. Physical maintenance was not included, that would be the responsibility of the city. The number of kiosks and phasing. Ike Smart City proposed fifteen in a Phase One with a ten-year term, and if, with a potential for a Phase Two with another ten-year term, at the optional discretion of the city and Ike. Success Mantra recommends a thirty-kiosk implementation in a phased approach over a five-year term with the option to extend to seven years. Location citing. Neither Ike nor Success Mantra provided a specific citing location map, that's something we can talk about in a little bit. Content coordination and display. Ike Smart City provides that they'll coordinate all content options and provide the city with design and software capacity. Success Mantra mentioned that they could provide some custom content management to be built to add customer information, design would be responsibility of the city. City responsibilities. Under the Ike proposal, the city would be responsible for permitting and plan review for the installation, content coordination. In the Success Mantra proposal, the city would be responsible for the permitting, the installation, site finalization assistance, maintenance of the kiosk, content management, and display design. Costs for the city. No installation, yes, thank you, no installation costs or operating expense costs under the Ike Smart City proposal. Staff costs associated with permits and collaboration, there would be some potential staff costs associated with permits and collaboration on site selection. The Success Mantra proposal notes that there would be an initial setup of six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars with an ongoing maintenance estimated at ninety, ninety thousand in the first year of operation, increasing by eight percent in year two and seven percent in year three. Other costs were not quantified relative to what the city would have to provide relative to Wi-Fi, staff costs for installation permits, and site finalization. Both programs proposed an advertising program as required in the R F P to fund the digital kiosk installation and infrastructure. The advertising proposed by Ike proposes a minimum twenty-five percent default advertising rotating screen time, which is basically a total of eight rotating slides. One slide would generally be available for city content in any given rotation. During active mode, when it's an individual engages with the kiosk, there would be an advertising banner visible at the top of the screen. Additionally, Ike is proposing a five-hundred-thousand-dollar set aside of display time for local business and nonprofit content that it would work directly with the city on. The Success Mantra proposal proposes a minimum of twenty percent advertising to be dedicated to city-related information. Revenues for the city and the community benefit. Ike Smart City is proposing a five-hundred-thousand-dollar signing bonus for the first, at the time of the first kiosk installation, with an annual guarantee of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in Phase One. It's also providing, as noted above, five-hundred-thousand dollars worth of advertising space for local businesses and nonprofit content. Success Mantra is providing no signing bonus, a minimal annual guarantee of seventy-five-thousand dollars for Phase One, which would be fifteen kiosks, a deployment, increasing to a hundred and fifty once all thirty kiosks are designed. The hundred percent net revenues would be recouped by the city. proposes a minimum 25% default advertising rotating screen time, which is basically a total of eight rotating slides. One slide would generally be available for city content in any given rotation. During active mode, when it's an individual engages with the kiosk, there would be an advertising banner visible at the top of the screen. Additionally, Ike is proposing a $500,000 set aside of display time for local business and nonprofit content that it would work directly with the city on. The Success Mantra proposal proposes a minimum of 20% advertising to be dedicated to city-related information. Revenues for the city and the community benefit. Ike Smart City is proposing a $500,000 signing bonus for the first, at the time of the first, kiosk installation with an annual guarantee of $750,000 in Phase 1. It's also providing, as noted above, $500,000 worth of advertising space for local businesses and nonprofit content. Success Mantra is providing no signing bonus, a minimal annual guarantee of $75,000 for Phase 1, which would be 15 kiosks deployment, increasing to 150 once all 30 kiosks are designed. The 100% net revenues would be recouped by the city once to pay for the installation costs and the infrastructure. Thereafter, it would be a 30% net advertising and revenues to the city. There were some options provided for increased revenue sharing and for a seven-year lease rather than a five-year lease. In order to inform the community about these potential programs, both vendors were invited to provide a brief overview of their proposal this evening. Ike Smart City is in attendance and will provide a brief presentation. Success Mantra was offered the same opportunity, but has chosen not to give a presentation. They are supposed to be online and available to answer any questions. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ike Smart City representatives.
And I think I have some presentation materials as well to pull up? Okay. While she's pulling those up. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Clay Collette with Ike Smart City, Senior Development Director and Head of our LA office. Thank you for this time and this opportunity. We've been working on this for a few years since the city first decided to pursue the RFI back in 2021, meeting with community, speaking with staff, and we're really excited and thrilled to be here and to present to you our proposal, and we hope that you'll vote tonight to partner with us. You have the next slide, please. A little bit about who we are and our program and our product is really what I want to communicate today. I think Elaine and staff have done a really good job of summarizing the financials, but I'll talk about this as well at the end. Ike Smart City was developed in 2016 in Denver. The problem we were hearing from a lot of city partners that we have on our Orange Barrel Media business was a problem of static wayfinding. Static wayfinding is often a cost center for cities. It's hard to permit, hard to maintain, is often out of date as soon as it's installed. And so Ike was developed as a response to that need with a digital, modern, self-sustaining, and in fact, a revenue-generating platform. So with double-sided touchscreens and proprietary software, we pull in real-time data and update wayfinding, transit, et cetera, listings in real-time without any human intervention. We show a mix of city content, art, and paid advertising, which allows us to fund the program and maintain it over its life. And in this way, we've delivered a modern, self-sustaining system. Next slide, please. Since launching in Denver, we've expanded quite rapidly over the last eight years. We're now in the ground in 20 cities across the country, big and small. Columbus, Ohio, Miami, Houston, Atlanta. Here on the West Coast, we are live in Berkeley and in Oakland, and we actually broke ground today in San Diego. One city that I wanted to flag. We have a lot of case studies, but I think Berkeley is analogous to Culver City. Not that any city truly is, but in terms of the deployment that we're installing there and in lessons learned. So in Berkeley, we're installing 31 units in the city, all in commercial zones, nowhere near residential areas. And in every city, we get a little bit smarter and better about our product. In Berkeley, we're really proud of the fact that we enhanced our accessibility offering. It took us 18 months, but we partnered with the National Federation of the Blind and actually developed a Braille QR plaque on the spine of the kiosk that users can navigate to scan and get a simplified version of the unit directed right to their mobile device. And I think this is one cool example of how we've improved the product in all 20 cities. And we hope to deliver something really tremendous for Culver. Next slide, please. The hardware. The unit stands at eight feet tall, three and a half feet wide, about a foot and a half deep. And we have extensive experience working in the right-of-way. We've spoken with your community members, and I think they have a very valid concern about where do these things go? How do they fit in the sidewalk? We take great care in navigating curb setbacks, wheelchair, on-ramp access. We're compatible in the street furniture zone, so to speak, that all street furniture must fit in. And we're really adept at minimizing our construction impacts and trenching to power in a way that only takes a couple of weeks to build out and is not invasive to the sidewalk. The cabinet is fully customizable on anything that's not glass. We mocked up a few examples in our RFP proposal. Here's a really simple one that has Culver City branding on the spine and on the lower part of the cabinet. We had one that has a film reel. And really, the goal here would be to make these feel unique and customized for Culver and even neighborhood-specific. So downtown could feel different than a kiosk located in the Arts District. The way the kiosk works is through two modes. We call passive and active, or passive and interactive. When it's not in use or passive mode, it's looking through a slideshow of eight slides. 25% of the time, as Elaine mentioned, will be just city time, and the city can delegate that to other stakeholders or local businesses as it sees fit. And then the rest of the time is paid advertising and art that we pay for and commission ourselves. When you walk up and touch it, it presents a bunch of applications. It's all our proprietary software. You can see that, the apps on the next slide. It's how to get around your city, transit, where's the nearest restaurant, social equity tools. So we have the where's the nearest food bank, safe shelter, addiction recovery resource. And then we have some fun entertainment. We have games. Like you can play a checkers-type game on either side of the kiosk, and you can take selfies with it. The next example is one of our directory applications. A lot of our apps work like this. This is Eat &amp; Drink. All of this is based on our proprietary software, and none of it is pay-to-play. Nothing, once you activate the kiosk, has any commercial content within it. In fact, it really is serving as a resource for local businesses because each listing is based on proximity to the kiosk that you're standing at. So if you open up our Restaurant Finder, Eat &amp; Drink, here we're showing Kasha as a restaurant you would find if you were using a kiosk right outside City Hall. Our Transit application has a bias for public transit. We partnered with Transit, a data mobility aggregator, and we're showing bus times, train times, even in real-time where Scooters and Bike Share is located as well. Everything we have can be sent to your phone. We know, in many cases, your first resource is your phone. We're not trying to compete with Apple. What we're trying to do is be a compliment. When you're walking around Culver, we hope to meet you at the ground level, show you in our passive mode loop, here's something that's happening in the city that you might not know about. Here's a new restaurant. You click on the kiosk, you get directions. You can send it to your phone. What I've been describing is sort of our base suite of apps. We also develop custom content for cities. In every city, we have dedicated resources at Ike doing the creative, helping manage the programming, whatever you need to get custom, cool applications that promote city events and city information. And we can pull in any live data feed available to us. So Metro, City Bus, of course, whatever the city can offer. And then we can coordinate with other groups as well to give a truly customized experience. One example of our commitment to art and customizing the experience right at launch is from Miami when we launched in Wynwood, which is really known for its public graffiti arts. Sort of the whole corridor is tagged. It's really beautiful. And so when we launched there, we actually went and commissioned local graffiti artists to make new art just for our units. So when we launched, they kind of fit the context. We're fully ADA compliant in terms of where we cite and all of our software, and we're also translatable into 100 different languages. In addition to city content guaranteed in the passive mode loop and whatever we design custom for the active mode, we also already have iPOS integrated into the system. So if there's inclement weather or an amber alert, automatic takeover. Privacy is something we've heard a lot from the community, and we want to be completely clear about this. We do not collect and sell data. We do not collect any personally identifiable information. It's not part of our model. We only sell advertising to generate revenue, and we're more than willing to commit in our contract if we were so lucky enough to get there that we would never sell data. Elaine summarized our proposal really well. I won't rehash it all. I will point out just a few highlights. We pay for everything. We pay the investment cost to fabricate the units, deploy the program. We pay to maintain them, and we send teams out five days a week, including once on a weekend, all at our cost. We are sharing with the city a greater of a minimum annual guarantee and percentage rent, which ensures you get a high floor and an uncapped ceiling on the program. Finally, I'll point out that nowhere in our proposal are we including a clawback for our investment cost. As soon as there's a kiosk in the ground, the city would be earning money from day one. In addition to all of that, Elaine mentioned this, but I wanted to highlight. We give steep discounts to local businesses headquartered here in Culver, and we will set aside $0.5 million annually every year just to show local businesses. We've heard a lot of community folks saying, "Look, I want my local business on this thing. I don't really want to compete with national ads." We need some of that to be able to fund the program, but we're more than willing to make sure that there's a generous allotment for local as well. I won't go through all of these. Outreach is probably the last point we've heard a lot in the community speaking about. My colleague Jessica and I have been doing that work since 2021. It's never enough. It's not enough. What we would commit to doing is to continue doing that if we were lucky enough to be awarded. And in particular, when it comes to citing, we don't want to put kiosks outside of a business or a resource that doesn't want it. We go and knock on doors of any abutting use, and we make sure they understand the product, and we shift where we can. Some folks we've talked to have been kind enough to support us. They include the Bendy, the Culver City Education Foundation. And then there's, I think, four others in here that I won't go through because I'll keep it brief if it's late. But we're here to answer any questions. We really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
And I'm back. Okay. So it's important to note that, as Clay mentioned, that neither respondent provided a detailed citing plan, but did identify that they would conduct comprehensive public outreach relative to potential citing locations. If the City Council determines to move forward with a selected vendor, as one of the options presented this evening, City Council can direct staff to return for a final approval on any citing plan and provide other direction related to the citing process, including any environmental review considerations. Ike Smart City's proposal, as presented without any modifications, provides a $500,000 cash signing bonus upon the installation of the first kiosk in Phase 1 and an additional $500,000 upon the installation of the first kiosk in Phase 2, if optioned. The minimal annual revenues to the city are estimated to range from $750,000 per year as a minimal annual guarantee of $50,000 per kiosk for Phase 1 for the first year and approximately $876,000 to 1.3 million annually during the first 10 years of operation. During the operation period, Ike would be responsible for maintenance and warranties on the kiosks. Success Mantra's proposal, as presented without any modifications, provides that the city would be responsible for all costs with construction and installation of the kiosk, which is estimated at $670,000. During the first year, Success Mantra would offer the city 100% of the net advertising revenue until the development and installation costs are recouped. Thereafter, the city would be offered 30% of the net revenues during the five-year term. Success Mantra would offer a three-year warranty on the kiosk infrastructure and a one-year on software. Thereafter, the city would be responsible for any equipment issues and ongoing maintenance. This evening, the council has numerous options it can consider in regard to this potential program. They include selecting a vendor and accepting one of the proposals as submitted or as modified per City Council direction. Staff would prepare and proceed with agreement. Desired modifications to be negotiated with the proposed selector and the City Council may wish to create an ad hoc subcommittee for this purpose. The second option would be requesting a citing plan. If the City Council determines to move forward with a selected vendor, then a provision relating to the specific process for selecting the proposed locations would be negotiated and incorporated into the agreement. City Council can direct staff to return to the City Council for final approval of any citing plan and provide any other direction relating to the citing process. Number three would be rejecting both proposals and discontinuing consideration of a potential kiosk program. Four would be rejecting the proposals and reissuing the RFP with modified criteria. Five would be requesting further discussion and/or information. That concludes my report. Staff and the vendors are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public?
Why, yes, we do.
Can we gather the lists?
We currently have 16.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and call our first 10 speakers. Jessica Yas, Dorothy Sad, Barbara Broid, J. Marvin Campbell, Steve Siegel, Jim Clark, Marcy Bond, Cristo Alexander, Renato Romano, Michelle Weiner. Our first speaker is Jessica Yas. Our next speaker is Dorothy Sad.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm going to talk to you in a little bit from the perspective of B-PAC. But now I'm just speaking for myself. From a business perspective, I think you're probably going to hear a lot of input tonight. And I would just say, I think these digital kiosks are amazing. They're everywhere in major markets, but they are definitely an advertising vehicle. And I think that I question the amount of money that's on the table, if it's enough for the eyeballs that are in Culver City and how big Culver City is now. I don't know if the other 39 vendors would offer more, but I do think that there is no doubt huge revenue streams from geo-targeting in something like a digital kiosk. So I would just encourage you to recognize the opportunity that you're looking at. A million dollars is nothing in your budget. It's something, but it's really nothing relative to the ad revenue that's out there. And there might be some really good information you could get in terms of all the competition out there and what's happening in other markets. So I hope that's helpful.
Our next speaker is Barbara Broid, followed by J. Marvin Campbell.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Barbara Broidy. I'm here representing Coalition for Beautiful Los Angeles. We have been in business for 40 years as a nonprofit. Digital signs didn't exist when we started. We object to the proliferation of commercial advertising signage, whether on public or private property, but particularly on public property and in the public's right-of-way, where we like to see sidewalks and trees and public spaces used by people, not advertising. Even if you decide to go forward with this program in the future, it's not ready for prime time yet. There are a number of questions. It seems to have been rushed. There was internal communication in the council suggesting that this needed to get done before the election. I don't know why that is. I don't know why the ordinance was adopted in a hurry as well. I don't know why the ordinance was adopted in a hurry as well, but it was. And there was also collaboration between one of your bidders and the city in the process of crafting the RFP, which may make the city subject to some violations of state law. I believe Section 10515 of the California Public Contract Code. Comparing this program to Berkeley is interesting. Berkeley is a 10.43 square mile city with a population quite in excess of Culver City's 123,000 people in Berkeley. They have incredibly wide streets. Shattuck, where a number of these Ike structures are located, is a very wide street with frontage roads, which removes the issue of driver distraction from one of their busiest streets. No one has looked or discussed digital advertising and driver distraction in this discussion. It is an issue. I have a quote from a well-known traffic safety consultant. "The more the commercial digital signs succeed in attracting the attention of motorists that render them a worthwhile investment for owners and advertisers, the more they represent a threat to safety."
Brody, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Jay Marvin Campbell, followed by Steve Siegel. Not seeing them online or in chambers. We're going to go to Steve Siegel.
Can you tell me a lot of time, please?
Two minutes.
Thank you very much. Couple of issues here, questions. Number one, can we test this first? Does it have to be a full rollout? I didn't understand how long each phase was, so I couldn't tell the numbers. I heard revenue numbers mentioned, 2.6 million. I heard some guarantees. It's a little hard to tell because it sounded like the maintenance and the software may only be guaranteed for the first year. So what we really need is a true return on investment calculation and analysis. What is the real revenue potential? What is the real spending potential? If someone puts a hammer through one of these things, who's paying for that? How often are these devices damaged? So I think the first speaker, and I also lived in Berkeley, is much bigger than Culver City, but it might be interesting to find out previous experiences of the various cities. What actually, you know, what typically happens? Because until you know the revenue and the expenses, we don't really know what the net would be. So it's hard to talk about revenue and what would be the outlay. It sounds like one of the companies, they outlay $670,000. Start, there's no outlay supposedly for this version that was presented, but really what is the net? You know, I'm assuming also that they're only in commercial areas. A couple of quick notes, since I have a moment. Great to honor Shindig teamists. I had two daughters coached by her. An incredible person, and her accomplishments are amazing. It's almost impossible to do what she did. That was fantastic. And one other note, I spent 40 minutes going back and forth to pick up kids through downtown and through Washington. Oh, the Fairfax. Four cyclists in 45 minutes. Four and zero buses. I know buses roll through there, never saw one. We do need to do a separate analysis on the cost of the city of these constructions for bike lanes versus actual usage and what it means on a per rider basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Clark, followed by Marcy Vaughn.
I'm Jim Clark, and I'm speaking for myself. When I served on the city council, we began a discussion of interactive digital kiosks. I was impressed with the concept then, and I still am. I'd like to share why I am so supportive. First, I believe our identity as a city is grounded in being innovative and forward-thinking. Harry Culver established the movie industry in Culver City when it was in its infancy because he believed in new technology. Interactive digital kiosks are innovative and new technology. Second, I've had the opportunity to become familiar with the technology, especially the Ike Smart City. In full transparency, Ike has been a contributor to the Culver City Arts Foundation and as a sponsor of the Summer Sunset Music Series. At last year's concert, they provided a demo kiosk for people to observe and interact with. One aspect was that they were used, the artwork from one of our members, to showcase. In the absence of having public art galleries in Culver City, providing 15 kiosks throughout the city to display and promote local artists is definitely a win-win situation. Additionally, the ability to display upcoming arts and cultural activities and performances will only enhance participation and add to our cultural stature. Third, and most recently, I'm thinking about the 2028 Olympics and related events. Mayor Bass wants to make these events as car-free as possible. That means lots of people coming to Culver City on public transit, buses, and bikes. It would be most helpful to have information kiosk available when they arrive to help inform and direct them to various venues and events. I reviewed the two proposals, and I find the Ike Smart City proposal to be superior. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcy Vaughn, followed by Crystal Alexander.
Good evening. I am speaking in support of doing these kiosks. I think that they will be beneficial to our city. I too believe that as the Olympics comes, we're going to need something like this. Even when you have cell phones, they're not going to give you all the information that you can necessarily get on these kiosks, especially when it comes to how easy it is to find out when our buses are running and what's happening in our city. I know that when, at times, when I try to navigate our city website, it's not always the easiest thing to do. Instead, I have to use a search engine to find what's actually on our website rather than the search engine on our website. So I think having something like this would be very beneficial. I tried to review both of the things today, both of the, both of what the company's had, and for whatever reason, it was not loading on the website. So I did not get a chance to. I do have more experience with looking at what Ike is offering, but I don't really feel like, because I wasn't able to review the other proposal, I don't feel like I can give a fair analysis of both of them. But I do definitely support this happening for our city, and I think it would be beneficial. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Crystal Alexander, followed by Renato Romano.
Good evening. I think we recognize in the last few years that the business community has been through quite some changes. They had an increase to the business tax. They've had to deal with the impacts of the Move project. They've had to deal with the impacts of a pandemic. So we have a unique opportunity here in terms of using these digital kiosks to do a partnership in a way between the city and the business community who could benefit from the advertising. It's true, they will pay for some level of that advertising, although there's going to be additional opportunities, at least for one of the proposals from Ike, for them to use that at lower cost than they would normally. So I think a revenue stream of this nature is very good for the city at this point because we all know that the city is facing a structural deficit. So that's one consideration, but that shouldn't be your only consideration. As was mentioned by the two previous speakers before me, we have an opportunity of using this as a way to advertise the city culturally for the events that are coming and our own. And even with the school district, I know that the joint committee was talking about having better collaboration with the school district and the city regarding events and things that are happening. So I think that's also an opportunity that we could be looking at here. The Ike proposal seems to be a little bit more broad in terms of meeting all the potential needs that I think that the city could be using. And I'd encourage the city council to reach out to all the relevant committees and commissions as they think about how they might be using those kind of digital kiosks for the benefits of all the programming in the city. And with respect to how you might use it, there's going to be a speaker that tells you that you need to get all your information on your phone. You're not going to get the same kind of search results there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Renato Romano. Not seeing them in chambers or on webex. Our next speaker is Michelle Weiner. Michelle, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Well, I'm sure it will come as no surprise that I would urge you to reject both proposals and defer the placement of digital kiosks to sometime in the future, if ever. Why? Well, it sounds like, it seems like we're moving from move Culver City to sell Culver City. So while it might be useful to have wonderful information about our public amenities, 75% of the time, the public will be exposed to advertising. And, you know, up until this point, we've managed to get by without any billboards. All the billboards that you see are in Los Angeles. So I would think that before going to digital signs that are way taller than a human being, we saw that in the presentation, that constantly expose people to this sort of bombardment, we would just have passive billboards around town, and that would be another way to get revenue. And it would not be taking up sidewalk space, which is precious, as we all know. So I can't support it, and I'm thinking that there, I mean, I've been canvassing, and I've talked to many, many people, and they've been telling me independently, I don't ask them about it, they just tell me, oh, my God, did you hear about the kiosks? It's terrible. And I'm like, well, you know, tell your council members about it. They're about to pass it. So just wanted to let the public know that they're big, they're unsightly. They are, you know, more screen time when we really need less. And they're a gateway, they're a gateway to more digital advertising or advertising in general in our public space. So I urge the council to please reject both proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our final speakers are Melissa Sanders, Daryl Minty, Travis Morgan, Mark Galanti, Jack Galanti, Eric Chabis, Chabisis? Chapsis, sorry, and Andrew Leist. Our next speaker is Melissa Sanders. Melissa, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening again. I actually really liked this presentation. The Braille thing, I thought, was a wonderful idea. Inclusivity is really big right now, and that is definitely a way to include our challenged community members and visitors. I'd love to also see what else we can do. I'm thinking Hope Parish may have to get a little historical movie going and pictures and really make this special to Culver City. You know, students do have art shows and things like that. We should be able to get those, you know, around. So, but what else can we do? I don't know if there's USB ports for people whose phones are dying, all sorts of things. But to do this, I think, not just for the revenue, but also for the access and understanding of what will be coming forward from the Frost Auditorium to the Kirk Douglas to other events with the Olympics coming up, I think it would be extra helpful. So I'm for it. I will let you guys decide crunching numbers if it's something we should do or not, but I think it could be a really great way to enhance Culver City in a unique way, which I do know we like to be the first to try stuff. But find out what the out clause is in case it doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daryl Minty, followed by Travis Morgan.
Hello, my name is Daryl Minty. I'm the Executive Director of the Culver City Downtown Business Association, and may I express my dismay that I am the only person reportedly addressed for Game Three of the World Series. Apparently, when I wear this jersey, they win, so I have to keep wearing it at least one more day. I'm coming to say two things in particular. The first is, and I did say this before last time I was here, it's very important that the business improvement districts, including the downtown, be at the table when these sites are chosen. Because while every resident has an interest in where these are sited, the beautification of the downtown is something that we have in our work plan, as does the arts district in its work plan. We very specifically know our district. We know every block. I know every bit of concrete and every bit of wrought iron that is coming up. So we need to be consulted directly. We need to be part of this process as a stakeholder in choosing the locations. If we do that, it'll be a much more successful program. The second thing I want to say is that there is a very large public benefit to be had here if we curate the spaces given to the public properly. And I believe it's really important that you, whichever proposal is taken, that the city takes some of that money and makes sure you have, if not a half-time, maybe a full-time FTE, whose job it is to curate that space. We have different needs in different places. We have the need to put on different events, to advertise different local events, to make sure we're connecting with local businesses. This is actually a very big job. And if you have somebody who's making sure that every week, we are making sure that we are using those one or two or whatever the slides are, then you can actually make this function. But if you don't do that, you will end up with a public message that is simply stale and lasts for weeks or months, and it won't function. And, you know, as enormously capable as Elaine and her staff is, simply giving her an extra responsibility without more people is not going to work. So that's my pitch to you all. Please make sure that some of that money is spent on staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Travis Morgan, followed by Mark Galanti.
Hello, council. I feel like I have worked really hard to find win-win solutions, you know, through this, and that's genuine. You know, there's a lot of folks out there who are just absolutely no, 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 and I really worked hard to try to find those win-win solutions. I'm concerned, though, that after the proposals that we've received from the RFP, we only got one, two proposals, one that's clearly a qualified proposal and one that's clearly an unqualified proposal. In our own ethics training in my HOA, we've been trained that if you receive proposals that are more than 10 to 15% apart from each other, that you should go back to those proposals and understand why they are more than 10 or 15% apart from each other. These proposals are 1,000% apart from each other. They are 10 times apart from each other, and I'd really like to understand why. And why of the 40 different vendors that are out there, that we only received two bids and only one qualified bid, who does any sort of outdoor kiosks? Do we have my slides available? So there are other options out there. I want to just be mindful that this is eight and a half feet tall. I can reach about seven and a half feet tall. Okay? So it's another foot taller than where I'm at and three feet wider. And as we can see from the proposal given by Ike, that it's, there's placements in many of these cities currently in the ground right now that are right in front of crosswalks, right in front of traffic lights, right in front of, concerning placements that they've already vetted and they've already done, where you can have scooters that are completely obscured, and this is a concern. This is not the only option, though. So if we look at the next slide, there are other options, for example, that are just single-sided so that you do not have the screen that is facing traffic and causing distracted driving. Instead, it goes parallel to the road and only faces in to the sidewalk. This vendor is not one of the bidders. Why? If we look at the next slide, there are other options that are even much, much smaller footprints that can cast directions right over to your mobile device and that still have the interactivity, that still have all the features that we're looking for, but that are not eight and a half feet tall and still have, you know, yet features that are beyond what we're seeing. If we look at the next slide, we have yet other vendors who have, these that are designed to be built into bus shelters, which I think would be a great way not to add even more clutter to our sidewalks and still have the same interactive functionality, and it still has the same transit information. It still has all of the features that we're looking for. Yet again, this bidder is not bidding on this project. Why? And it has all the advertising and everything we're looking for. If we go to the next slide, you even have those that can put it right into our parking kiosk, and you still get the same interactivity, you still get the same features, but you can put it inside a parking structure, which is probably where you'd want to start from if you're going into some business into Culver City. And you have many different sizes. The only one that we're seeing tonight is the very largest size that there is out there on the market at eight and a half feet tall. There's many human-scale sizes out there. I would encourage us to look at all the options before we vote on this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Galanti, followed by Jack Galanti.
Hello, council members. Thank you. I've been involved with advertising for over 42 years, having a national firm doing advertising. So I've seen these gimmicks and fads of advertising come and go. And while I am a big supporter of bringing revenue to the city, it's important to know that, you know, advertising is based on number of eyes, trying to get a million eyes for 30 seconds, and, which is a distraction, there's a safety issue there, but, you know, we do want a few ways to bring this in and make it successful. But there's been many, many cities that have tried this, and they've had to remove it, whether it be San Jose, Los Angeles, Maine, all the way in countries, Sweden, France, Sao Paulo, Brazil, have installed these and then removed them, and in some cases, it's been hard for them to remove, and doesn't meet the goals. The other thing to consider is, you know, because this is our public space, our sidewalks, and I'm a big proponent of keeping it open space. I've had my run-ins with enough utility poles and places along the sidewalks myself, so I like to keep them open. But if we're going to install this, like the gentleman before me, I like the idea of maybe utilizing spaces that's already been taken up, such as a bus stop or other objects that are already there, if they're going to install these and at least use spaces that have already been removed from public use. The other part is the data mining. I believe Ike, when they say to us that they're not going to try to data mine us, but I know that's where the money is in our business. Data mining is where the money is. So when you're negotiating this, keep in mind, you're not negotiating with Ike or whoever is in this contract now. You're negotiating with the company next company or most likely the third company down the road that takes over. And make sure you protect the public's interest in that case. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jack Galanti, followed by Eric Chabis.
Good evening, council. I think the only way these signage work, if they're placed in places that will actually be utilized, such as, have you seen the RFP? Has everyone viewed it? So there's the image. So, there's the image of, in front of the Culver Theater formerly Arc Light. Those are one of the locations that I think would actually make sense for the signage. It's where people are already walking around. It's publicly owned by the city, and there are some locations that will work perfectly for this. It's where people are already going to be, and it's not going to be where someone has to casually travel by. I don't think those places are going to be great for the city. It won't make it worthwhile to have a big signage in the area where there aren't eyes on it. My other one is placement and use of the sidewalk. The moment we put these in, in our sidewalks, we won't get them back, right? It's a lot of work to remove it in case it doesn't work in that location. I want to make sure that we're placing them in places that we don't need to do that, because that's going to cost a lot of money to remove something if it's not working well or if that location isn't making a lot of money. That's all. As I have time. Let me just go back to my thing. My other concern is, as someone said before, they're offering donated time for the city events and other things. And my concern is, if we don't have someone on the city staff to actually update those, then that's, you don't get any benefit from it, right? And I would hate to dump something else on Elaine when her team is already working on multiple other things. It doesn't really make sense for that benefit if there isn't someone on staff to actually update that and create those images. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Shibis, followed by Andrew Leist.
Good evening, Council, Mayor and Council. My name is Eric Shapsses. I'm speaking on behalf of Ike Smart City. I performed the community outreach, community and stakeholder outreach on behalf of Ike for the past year plus here in Culver City, and for the record, I was paid for my consulting services. Ike is proposing a very exciting program, but in the time that they've been out here, there has been some misinformation that has been disseminated about the kiosks and what they are and what they're not. So, let me clarify. The kiosks do not store personal data, share data, provide surveillance of any kind. The kiosks are no cost to the city. In fact, what they are proposing is a minimum revenue on the bottom end and on the top end, a 50-50 revenue share for the use of the city-owned space. Kiosk display, advertising, and again, share the revenue 50-50 with the city of Culver City in exchange for the installation in the public right-of-way. Kiosk screens will be no more than 15 square feet, two per unit, double-sided, roughly the size of a 65-inch television screen, but mounted vertically. Many of you have screens this size in your living room. Kiosk will be installed only where the sidewalks is wide enough to accommodate them while providing the required ADA path width. And the kiosk will be installed no less than 100 feet apart, per the city code. Through its outreach, Ike has received support from the Arts District bid, several city commissioners, arts organizations, downtown businesses, and other nonprofit community organizations, as you've seen in the presentation by Clay. This is a great program with significant benefits for the community, as well as a dedicated revenue stream that could total $1.5 million per year in revenue when the full program is rolled out. I urge you to support the Ike proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Leist. Andrew, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Up-to-date information that we get on our phones from the city website and the internet is, I think, an assertion without any evidence. More importantly, our former ordinance against public signage, except for onsite signs for businesses, is part of what makes Culver City so visually attractive compared to other parts of Los Angeles County. The proposed kiosks will display a great deal of advertising, as noted in the proposals. That's where the revenue comes from. So, despite promotion of local events and local information, which of course has value, I argue that the frequent ads will diminish our cityscape. Culver City is more beautiful without them, and I encourage you to reject these proposals before they go further. I am extremely grateful to our past leaders kept Culver City free of billboards and signage for so many years, up till now. If you resist these proposals, I think our current and future residents will be grateful to you, too. Thank you very much.
And then we have a representative from B-PAC.
Good evening again. I'm Dorothy Sad, representing your selected nine-member B-PAC Commission for the general public. That's the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We met briefly to talk about kiosks. I just have a couple of slides. So, our core remit is to expand the role of the community in providing advice to you on mobility-related issues in the public right-of-way, which is why we met to talk about this, because we wanted to have an informed point of view to share with you. Clearly, digital kiosks will occupy the public right-of-way. One of our members said it very clearly, "From the curb to the property line." And we don't talk about that a lot, but in Culver City, it's very valuable space. Another member talked about aesthetics, and that aesthetics really matter. And I think, you know, you've heard some of that tonight, you've heard it previously. So, we really believe we can assist you in the site-location part of the project. That's really squarely within our remit. And so, I have a couple more slides to show you, but we really are formally asking you to include us in that process. Next slide. I think you've already seen this a couple of times, and people have talked about it. These kiosks are huge. They're very, very large. You can see a moderately-sized gentleman, and he's dwarfed by the kiosk. They're eight feet tall, and those are dimensions that are in the proposal. You can read them. Next slide. In this particular photo, you can see how anyone turning right here would not be able to see a pedestrian, a cyclist, a wheelchair. It is clearly in a sightline, and we really want to help you avoid that. And it's going to be tricky, right? Because you've got to find 15 spots in Culver City that address the desire of a media company that's guaranteeing a certain minimum for you, but at the same time protects public safety. So, we really want to help you with that. We believe kiosks can be super usable, helpful. You can imagine places within Culver City where they would fit. It just might not coordinate well with where a media company would like to place them. So, again, what we're asking is just to participate. The public probably wants to participate as well, but we're very used to looking at optionality, debating, inviting the public to come to the debate forum, and then presenting back to you. And we would love to do that. So, finally, we just respectfully ask you to consider your appointed nine-person member of the B-PAC, to consider the site-location, which is one portion of the project. We'd love to help.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the presenter if any of the issues that were brought forward by some of the comments and speakers, if you have any comments or, because some of them also, you know, raised concern to me in terms of data mining, privacy, location, things like that. But if you'd like to comment, then I'd like to hear your take on that.
Yeah, happy to, and thank you, Councilmember. Data mining is one, I'm happy to get into more detail. It's obviously very techie, but we don't collect and sell data, period, not part of the business. And we can write into our contract that we will never do that, and that would apply to any successors and assigns of our business. Not that we have any intent to do that, that I'm aware of, but I think there's a way to protect the city via contract. And I'm happy to go into more detail on that kind of stuff. One, I did hear about sighting, and I think there were reference images to other cities. Every city has its own street furniture codes with curb setbacks, distances from the curb, from property lines, relationship to crosswalks, to on-ramps. City staff has already put what the city's requirements are into the RFP. We fully intend to comply with those, and we fully intend to, you know, go through that in the permitting process. When it comes to site selection, we welcome a community-laden process, working with you all, working with the B-PAC, working with whoever you all deem appropriate to make sure that we come up with good locations that make sense for the city.
And in terms of location-wise, you know, the city is constantly changing the landscape of what we build and where we build it and whatnot. If a unit is installed in location A, now we have new development coming, and that unit needs to be removed and reinstalled someplace else. Is that something that is possible?
Absolutely. In most of our contracts, we actually have, like, a relocation provision. It'll have to have some parameters around it. We can't move the whole network. It's too expensive to do that. But in connection with, you know, safety concerns, new development, new right-of-way work as part of streetscape improvements, we regularly either move the kiosks entirely or move them temporarily and then bring them back once the improvement's complete.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, I think a lot of the comments that I was going to say, we sort of went over the first time this came forward. I think this is a great opportunity, especially with everything that's coming forward, whether it be Super Bowl, the World Cup, I mean, FIFA, FIFA, whatever it is, and the Olympics, and opportunity that we should capitalize on, pardon me. And, you know, this council, as well as every other council, is tasked with additional revenue sources, and I think this is a great way of really ensuring some additional revenue sources to the city. That being said, I think in looking over what the two vendors offer, Ike is definitely, in my opinion, a little more qualified than success mantra in terms of what they offer. And then, more importantly, the revenue, the return to the city. I like the 50-50, and that we're setting, or they're setting $500,000 aside to help businesses out in terms of advertising, correct, right? Help businesses out with advertising, giving them sort of the first dibs at it. I agree with Mr. Menthee's remarks about, you know, making sure that the business improvement district, pardon me, is part of these conversations in terms of site locations, ensuring that, you know, they're not obstructed, ensuring that these screens aren't facing traffic where it's an obstruction to traffic. So, I, just going over it, would elect to go with Ike. I think that I would also suggest a subcommittee with, an ad hoc subcommittee with myself and Vice Mayor O'Brien on it, the site locations and the B-PAC as well, and all community members that care to participate in this meeting to ensure that we get it right in terms of site location, the amount, the spacing, the, I think, the whole kit and caboodle, so to speak. Like I said, it's a great opportunity to bring in some extra revenue to the city. So, if I go to the motion consent, I'll just, my thing is Ike, ad hoc subcommittee with myself and Vice Mayor O'Brien, and to ensure that we have one community meeting with all those interested to go over sort of the details of the placing and spacing and site location, as well as the, Mr. Menthee's suggestion. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson.
Well, thank you. Well, the first time I was involved in a discussion with regards to digital kiosks was, I don't know, 2018 or 2019 on the council. We even voted if we were going to move forward with it or not, and it was sort of like a three and a half vote for, and that was, the three councilmembers who voted to pursue digital kiosks was Thomas Small, Alex Fish, and myself. And Daniel Lee, he really liked the concept, but he felt that maybe we should build them ourselves. And then Megan Salwell, the fifth councilmember at that time, was against it. And then, we created a subcommittee who was going to move forward on the project, and the council decided to put Megan Salwell on there and Daniel Lee. And that killed the project, because we had one who didn't want it on the subcommittee. So, in retrospect, for me, that was not very smart. I liked the suggestion from my colleague, Mr. Vera, to put Albert Vera and Dan O'Brien on the subcommittee, because together with me, we were the ones that changed the sign ordinance, so I would assume that there is some positive take on the project. So, and then, there was someone who sort of felt, why is this being moved now? As you saw on the staff presentation, this time around, it started in 2021, and, or 2020, you know, we started way back. The thing is that every time a new council gets seated, you sort of have to restart a lot of it, because there's new members who need to be brought up to speed, going to weigh in, and it's sort of, this really then becomes speed of government, to be said, very slowly. So, there is a reason to, since this has been a process going on now for quite some time, to get this to some kind of final decision, either throw it out or move forward. That said, and I think that, for me, this is, in a way, the information side of this, I think, is going to be very valuable. I think about it in several places. It's more like, you know, if you think about it like a mall, but this is an outdoor mall, right? And when you go to malls now, you have those signs, and then you can, you know, find what you need, and there's a lot of information and so on. And this is, in a way, a similar function, but this is an outdoor mall, right? It's our city, it's downtown area, it's the Art District, it's over at our transit center at the Fox Hills area and other places, right? So, for me, that is really what attracted me to this whole concept, that we also are going to make some money, and not having to put out any money makes this much more attractive. The driver, for me, has been the information side, that we can get out, and all these different functions with benefit for visitors and residents, and all the different functions on the device. So, I looked at this very carefully, since I've been involved in this for quite some time. There is two very different proposals that we have received, and, you know, someone suggested that while we only receive two, we should go out and get more. And I think that this is what the market offer. Maybe we are so small, so that's why some of these others didn't want to bid, right? I don't know. But I think that, for me, the proposal from Ike is the more attractive one. It makes sense. So, I would support that we move forward with the contract negotiation with Ike, and I also would support that we create the ad hoc committee with Councilmember Albert Vera and Dan O'Brien, who deals with the contract negotiation and also the site selection. And if that subcommittee chooses to have a public meeting, or if they choose to have individual meetings with different stakeholders and so on, I will leave that up to the subcommittee and staff, what really is the most effective way to get most of the valuable input into the site selection. So, you know, I can make the motion that we select Ike, and that we create a subcommittee. So, you know, I can make the motion that we select Ike and that we create a subcommittee with Albert Vera and Dan O'Brien, who then are, together with staff, finalize the contract negotiation and finalize site selection, which comes back to council. The final site selection should come back to council, in my opinion. So that would be my motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation and for the public comments. I have just a couple questions. Someone brought up, you know, if this were to go through, and heaven forbid, there was a removal process, but are there cancellation fees and what would be the removal process if it were to ever go that way?
Thank you for the question. Neither proposal included a cancellation clause. That would have to be something that's negotiated. In asking Ike about this particular issue, there would be concern, and this is the part that would need to be negotiated, about the capital investment that they would be investing into the project and then the removal of it. So again, that would need to be negotiated.
Thank you. At the last meeting, we talked about getting feedback from the business community and other constituencies. We talked about, because this will be near neighborhoods, so we talked about possibly, or we actually didn't talk about neighborhood associations, but have we reached out to neighborhood associations and what has that feedback been? Because that's really important, because that was something that I really wanted to hear, get a wide variety of opinions.
Sure. So to answer your question, we have not reached out to neighborhood associations. We've done two GovDelivery outreach, one on October 15th and one on October 24th, which included a variety of the GovDelivery lists totaling 20,000 folks on each time. We also did an advertisement in the Culver City News that ran on October 24th. And I know that we've done outreach, or we've spoken with the business improvement districts about this potential program. And then in that outreach, which is inclusive in that 20,000, we did notify all Culver City businesses with the emails that they have on file.
Okay. And no one responded?
No one responded.
Some, no, maybe no interest or... Do we know the average usage per hour of the machines?
So we did ask this of the vendors. Average usage is going to depend on the size of the city, where it's located, pedestrian. The number that we were given for some of the other markets is 400 times a month for an active, assuming that's a one-minute engagement.
And do we know what would be, you know, I think it's over six months, we received some preliminary data, what would be a good usage rate? So how would we measure effectiveness?
So I don't think we're, we know what a good usage rate would be for Culver City. I think that for the first six months, part of this program would be developing a baseline and then hoping to see that baseline and the interactions increase over time in an upward trend. And then the other option, you know, the other measure effectiveness would be just seeing how our revenues were tracking and if those were also continuing in an upward trend.
There's a lot of employees at Ike. There was the Ike manager, there's a community outreach person, but who would be in charge of managing the content from Culver City's side? We'd have to hire a person, or how would that work out?
That's a great question. It would be our Communications and Public Information Officer that would manage the content coordination. In specifically the Ike proposal, they would do a lot of the content development, so the role would really just be in approving the messaging and the design.
Thank you. There's a public comment that we've received about environmental review. Do they need to be subjected to environmental review?
Thank you, Councilmember Christina Burrows, Assistant City Attorney. This project would be subject to environmental review. Prelimarily, it looks like it would be exempt as a Class III and a Class XI exemption under CEQA. Once, if the city council opts to move forward, staff would evaluate the program, you know, the number of kiosks, location, to provide a more full sum review and evaluation under CEQA.
Okay. Thank you. We did talk about the privacy and kind of the data, but can the city create its own privacy policy and incorporate that into the contract? I think that's probably the city attorney's, sorry.
Yes. I mean, the city council can direct whatever terms it wishes for the contract, and then it's just a matter of negotiation. So if there's very specific things the city council wants to see with regard to privacy, the council can direct that, and we would request that be incorporated, and then it would be part of the negotiation.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you. There's been a lot of split reactions about the kiosks, and regardless of the kiosks, everything about this action item has been, you know, uncommon. The zoning code to allow advertising was changed in order to have a conversation, but the rationale to do that before was not sufficient, in my opinion. It's come back many times, as Councilmember Erickson mentioned. But putting all that aside, I really was hoping to get some feedback from the business community and other constituency group. I did hear, you know, I was at a recent meeting talking about screen time, how we're trying to get our youth avoiding screen time, and here we are, creating more opportunities for screen times. I do think we need additional revenue streams, but, you know, I think we should be selective about what we accept. Saying all that, I'm not opposed to these signs at all. I do like the artwork. I think the graffiti art is cool. There's great opportunities to advertise businesses and community events. I do like one of the public comments, the bus stops seem like such an appropriate place and actually the most functional for people who are taking the bus, who may not, who may or may not be low-income, who may not have access to cellphones. That would make sense to actually access, you know, how to get to the next route if they don't have a cellphone. And then the parking permit, or, excuse me, the parking garage integration also makes sense. So those would be something that I hope that we could incorporate. So at this time, I just think we're going really, really fast, and I understand the speed of government, and I understand why there's an urgency to push it fast, but I just think we should slow down and move with option five, really get intentional community feedback first, develop our own privacy policy, just learn a little bit more about the financials, and then possibly talk about reducing the scale. But that would be, that would come in from the scale of how many we need, given the size of Culver City compared to some of the other cities. But there is somewhat a potential with this. I'm not opposed to this, and I always want to offer a compromise. So just wanted to share that. So thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks to staff for a really thorough, detailed look at what we're doing. Based on several of the comments, I do have a few questions. Some of them have been answered to a degree, you know, what's the, you know, future-proofing, data-mining in our contract, sign-locating input from BPAC. Sounds like at this stage, we, if our community, our communications manager is going to be in charge of this, we could evaluate the load if it's too much, because I agree, it's, there's nothing worse than seeing a marquee with something on it that's a week old, especially when that space is valuable. So making sure that, you know, when we get this up and running, it's up to date constantly, to the date. We can have an event that expires on Wednesday, and then there's something else we want to promote that's on Thursday. And I think that's critical. I do have a question, just to address the concern of us only having two respondents to the RFP. And I know that we went out to 150-something, it's a big number, and we did direct outreach to seven companies, and there were, I think you said 39 or 37 downloads of the RFP. Do you, can you speculate as to why we only had two respondents?
If I'm speculating, I think that the, our RFP was pretty comprehensive. It was very detailed. We also were requiring that these kiosks are put in at no cost to the city, that they're maintained at no cost for the long term, and we were also looking for, you know, a revenue-sharing program. I will say that SUFA was a proposer in our RFI. They provided a lot of information, and they did reach out to us. We had conversations with them when this RFP was released, and they did issue a letter, and they did reach out to us to say that after evaluation of the RFP, that it was financially infeasible for them to continue. They just didn't see this as a revenue, as of being able to do this and still drive the revenues that we were looking for and that they would look for. So I think this is an aggressive program, based on all the feedback that we've received, and that could have been why there was a reduced number of respondents.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. And I appreciate the effort, I mean, to get responses. It was done. And I do know that the interactivity immediately narrows the scope, and then it needs to be a profit center narrows it even more. And probably, as Councilmember Erickson said, the size of our community, it just keeps getting smaller and smaller, the number of developers that could provide what we needed. The, I do agree with Mr. Morgan's, and Councilmember Puzo also said, that there's a great opportunity to, I know that it's not in the, you know, the design inventory of Ike to do a bus shelter kiosk, but I would like to have staff explore how we can build one around it, or if there's a way to collaborate with Ike to make that work, because that does make a lot of sense to have that available in that space that's already occupying right-of-way. I think it, and people are sitting, so they're, you know, from an advertising standpoint, they're absorbing the ads, so that's a good thing as well for that purpose. I agree also, I never thought of it. I think it's a great idea inside our parking structures. Does that make sense? It's not visible to vehicles, but ground floor, you're getting however many cars per day going in there, and people are parking to go to a, you know, to a store or restaurant in all likelihood. So something to consider as well. You know, and, oh, a question for Mr. Colette. When, I was told that you guys presented a while ago, and it was a different model than what we're seeing on the deck today. If we, if, you know, 3.0 comes out, if that's 2.0, is there a process to get the latest and greatest?
Yeah, absolutely. 3.0 is our latest right now, and we've actually, in Berkeley is a good example, we started installing in, I think, 2020, and then we actually went back and retrofitted them all to 3.0s. They were 2.5s, now they're 3.0s. And so, you know, as of right now, we mostly focus on upgrading the internal components. So you think about your iPhone, the shape hasn't really changed, but the insides get a lot better every year, and we're happy to commit to doing that in our contract, and then as we release new models, I'll rapidly discuss that as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And actually, while you're there, in terms of, you know, what I was asking Elaine about, you know, why there was only two respondents, if you're going to pitch yourself in, you know, your elevator pitch, what does separate Ike from all the others? Why did we only get two responses?
I don't know why you only got two responses. That was as surprising to us. We've competed and won a vast majority of these RFPs across the country. I think that probably has to do something with our competitive set and, you know, how they felt about this competition. I think we see this as a really exciting opportunity. We see the value here. We wouldn't commit to give 50% of the money to you if we didn't see that value and weren't willing to make that investment. I think what separates us is, and, you know, you've seen our growth trajectory, we're now 150 employees doing this across the country. We're installed in 20 cities with about 600 units in the ground, if not more, today. And so I think we've just really separated ourselves in delivering a model that's turnkey, that just delivers everything to you without any cost, and competitors have struggled to really develop that business model and give all the benefit that you have to give to be able to secure these contracts.
Have you unwound any cities?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Okay. Yeah. So, you know, I'm just going to quickly go through things that I wrote down as we were going through the presentation and why I believe this is a good idea. I brought this forward without realizing that it had the history that Councilmember Erickson mentioned, because I was thinking about the wayfinding and the ability for the city to better reach its community. You know, we, with events, we're always offering the banners that go over Overland and over Culver, and those are, you know, they're up for several weeks, if not months. These kiosks can be turned over in a minute as another event comes up. And I, and a lot of people I've had or I've heard say, well, you can get all this information on your phone, and, yeah, but it's, you've got the whole world on your phone, and it's very cluttered, and it's also, we all know that, you know, Google and all the search engines are, they put you in a pipeline that is based upon, you know, your habits. These, the wayfinding part of this is curated by our staff, and it's, I'm assuming that we're not going to have the whole world at our fingertips, we're going to have what's in Culver City on our fingertips, and the user won't be filled with all that other noise and clutter. That way, we can get people aware of things more efficiently, and then from the standpoint of the 25% of the rotation of the ads, people will see, oh, you know, the Summer Concert Series is on Wednesday night. Not everyone that walks through downtown knows that. You know, they're just there to go to one of our restaurants, and then they see that, and they're like, oh my God, I'm going to come back tomorrow and go to the Summer Concert Series or whatever showing at the Kirk Douglas or at Venta, you know, or at the Venda. And I did take note, I was actually surprised at how they got letters of support from the Venda Museum, the Ed Foundation, the Downtown Business Association, the Arts District, Helms. So I think those are valuable feedback tools. I don't know, you know, there's over 50 businesses, how many businesses, Mr. Memthee, downtown? Members? A lot. So there's input, the Arts District bid, there's, I don't know how many, there's dozens. So, you know, there's input and feedback from the business communities. I did read somewhere where, and I agree, that it's dismissive to not consider, let's say in front of Culver Crossroads at National and Washington, you know, certainly that is a business district, but there are also residents there. So it, as we increase in density, more and more of our business districts will have people in it, so we do need to acknowledge. So we do need to acknowledge that, that these are going to be near where people live and to be considerate of that. Again, we're not, we're not cutting-edge, but I do think these are very modern. Our West Side cog neighbors, West Hollywood and Santa Monica have them. Not for Mike, but they're actually, definitely West Hollywood. They're, it's motion video, which we're not doing. Non-interactivity, I don't know if Santa Monica's is interactive. It is. So, but I don't think West Hollywood's is. So it's not way outside-the-box thinking, but I do think it's important and valuable. As far as right-of-way, again, I do want to piggyback on what Councilmember Vera said, and I do agree, and Mr. Colette agreed, that it would be valuable to have BPAC involved in citing locations. So I'm not sure if that was in Councilmember Erickson's motion, but I would like a friendly amendment to include that. And the big thing, something that I wasn't thinking about when I first brought this up, is we do have a five million, over $5 million a year annual structural deficit in the city. And if we do only the first half of this, 15 of them, that's, yeah, 15? Ironically, that's about 15% of our annual deficit that we're going to have taken care of. If we do 30, we'll see if that makes sense. That'll be double that, 30% of our annual deficit that we'll take care of. And we're going to learn more about how we're going to reduce that even more on A2. But it's really important to be fiscally sound. And this is a great way to get out messages about our community, provide wayfinding, and reduce our structural deficit. So I'm in favor of Councilmember Erickson's motion. I would also like to include, I don't know if this could be within the ad hoc committee, subcommittee, or needs to be directed, but I would like to explore bus shelter integration. And what was the other thing I said? Yeah, also, yeah, parking garages, look at that as well. Seems like there was something else, but that sounds good to me. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to do my best to be brief. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thanks to the community members that spoke. Thank you to staff for putting everything together, and your presentation as well. My main concern is procedure and process. I feel very adamantly that how we do things is very important. Transparency and accountability is always at the core of what I try to do from this seat. Innovation and moving forward is incredibly important. And how we do things is important. I am incredibly concerned of the sightlines and driver distraction possibilities with these billboards that will run. I'm glad that we kind of stepped back from calling them wayfinders. So I appreciate that, because it is ads. And I think we should just be transparent with the community about what's coming. So I'm very concerned about that, especially in light of the pedestrian death not too long ago. And we are no stranger to traffic violence in Culver City, unfortunately. So anything additionally, I think, is something that we really need to have centered as a safety concern. And I assume I've heard some consensus. So as this moves forward, I really hope that pedestrian safety and traffic violence is centered as we think about placement, particularly that the sizes are very large. I know that our representatives from Ike mentioned that they do not collect or sell data. I know that there is a capacity for these kiosks to track certain things. So I would just ask for a specific, you know, language as things move forward, to be very clear about whatever is recorded, whether it's the images, how long that those things are stored, is there facial recognition, any of those things, that that be very specifically spelled out. I don't know if that could be amended or something that is specifically added to the motion, but I would make the request that we are very serious about our community's data, both cellphone data and their facial recognition. So I would request that that is also added to this motion. I did hear in the presentation that there was a period that the city would thereby be responsible for maintenance. So I just want to make sure that we just have clarity when we're responsible, amount, et cetera. I assume that, given that the data and some of the costs that have been shared out thus far, that expected revenue generation must exceed what has likely been promised to us. So I just want folks to keep that in mind. You know, this is, you know, this is putting a price tag on us, our traffic, our viewing these things. And there is a reason, a very conscious choice by prior councils to protect our public right-of-way space and be careful and intentional about that. So a lot has happened over this past year to move this and be in this moment. So I just want to thoughtfully lift that up in this space as well. And we do have a very massive, about $350 million budget. There was about an $18 million deficit in this past budget cycle. So it will take a comprehensive effort to review and see, you know, what we need to do to balance our budget. So while this is attractive, you know, so is Measure RE, so is Measure BL. So I think there are other ways to kind of look at doing those things. So while I appreciate this, we're still going to have some things to deal with as a city. So this will not close our deficit likely in any way. Again, we're a city of 5.2 square miles, about 41,000 people. Pew Research Center lets us know that about 97% of Americans have cellphones. So this is not really an issue that we are solving. This is an opportunity for advertisements to be brought into our community. I would like for us to be very explicit that hopefully at these ad hoc committees, that the public will also be invited to them, particularly given the timeline and how accelerated it has been. Although I know that this isn't the first time it's been before us. But I would hope that we would welcome community input in the processes as they move forward. I hope that that would be something that we could share, as this will impact the future of Culver City and how our residents and stakeholders, business and alike, experience our community. So those are my thoughts and requests. And I think there's been a motion on the table. I don't know if...
I have a quick question, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
What part of maintenance are we responsible for?
Under the Ike proposal, we would not be responsible for any maintenance.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. All right, thank you.
You did say under, I did hear that from you, though, correct? Was that for the other proposal?
Yes.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Erickson.
Yeah, so my motion was actually very, very wide-open-ended, because I felt that the ad hoc subcommittee could take all the input from speakers and from staff and from us here on the council, and then move forward. So that's why my motion was to create an ad hoc committee. First was that we go with Ike. And we create an ad hoc subcommittee to, together with staff, do the final contract negotiations. And with regards to site selection, that the committee suggestion was to have a big, have one community meeting. What I said was that make sure that they have all the stakeholders to come to the table and have discussions with them. It's really up to the committee then to how they want to do this, you know, who they want to involve and all that stuff. So my purpose was that it was going to be very open-ended. So the motion is, that I made, was Ike, ad hoc subcommittee, to do contract advice with staff to finalize the contract, and then work on the site selection and involve all stakeholders.
Can you repeat that? Your microphone was off.
What?
I just turned it on.
I would support it if, there we go. If we included a city's own privacy policy and then reduce the amount of kiosks.
Discussion, yeah, the response to the RFP, I believe, is based upon a minimum number of kiosks in terms of revenue. But question to staff, do you need direction in the motion about the bus shelter, or can that be taken care of in the ad hoc?
I've given you all the leeway.
Vice Mayor, it sounds to me, the way the motion was stated, that staff would be collaborating with the subcommittee.
Okay, great.
And maybe I should be clear on that, because there might be even more things that pops up, right, that none of us have thought about right now when you guys start digging into it. So I don't want to lock us into a certain...
You should do that, 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 that's why.
So motion, do I need to repeat my motion? We good? And then, I guess, the second motion would be to who should be on the ad hoc committee, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Councilmember Erickson, if I could, when you originally made the motion, you did clarify that the final site selection would come back to the city council. Is that still part of your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that's important. And one second, that.
Yes, we do have a second. But I just wanted to clarify if you wanted to take the ad hoc subcommittee separately?
Who's going to be on the ad hoc subcommittee? I think it's a separate motion, yeah.
Okay, I have the approval of an interactive digital kiosk program with commercial advertising along city sidewalks and public right-of-way, which is the program. Select Ike as the vendor for the program. Create an ad hoc subcommittee to determine the terms of the contract and involve all stakeholders regarding citing and other identified, other items. And have final site selection come back to council for approval. Good?
Sounds good.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Erickson, and a second by Councilmember Vera. All members have voted. Motion passes three ayes, one no from Councilmember Puzo, and one abstain from Mayor McMORAN.
And Madam Mayor, if I may suggest a second motion, and that is to appoint Councilmember Vera and Councilmember, Vice Mayor O'Brien, to the ad hoc subcommittee.
I have a motion by Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Erickson, and a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien. All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All members have voted. The motion passes four ayes, one abstain from the mayor.
Before you move on, Mayor, may I seek one more clarification? Sean? I just want to clarify, when the motion was to select Ike, typically, we need to know if you're approving an agreement with Ike, with direction to the subcommittee to finalize terms and negotiations, not just selecting them and then negotiating. So I'd like clarification on that, because that would kind of determine whether we need to come back for approval of the agreement. It's not clear at this point. And I think for the record, we need to be very clear.
It sounds like the subcommittee wants it back to the council, the final agreement.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Is there no way to do that vote again? The first vote?
Somebody from the yeses has to agree to pull it back, and recall it.
I'm going to abstain for the first.
I think you voted yes, is that correct?
Not for the subcommittee, but for the first one.
You voted no.
Someone in the majority vote would need to do a motion for reconsideration, if they're willing to do so.
No and abstain is actually the same type of vote. If you look at Robert's rules and those, it's sort of, anything that's not a yes is sort of considered to be a no vote, so.
Seems like the answer is no.
Okay, well, it's like you're saying, but if you're going to reject that, that's your all's decision.
Seems like the answer is no. I'm sorry, Councilmember Puzo. All right, it's very late. So I know that the user fee presentation is pretty lengthy. Is that something that can be cut down at all? I know we're not to that one yet, but I'm just thinking, because I know the transparency ordinance is still an item, and it's already after midnight. So I don't want to cut anything, because folks who have hung out probably still want to have their item spoken to. But it's also very late, and I think that, out of fairness to the public, who might want to speak on an item, but like many of us have to get up and go to work tomorrow and/or deal with their children, or both, or anything else that they might have to do in the morning. I don't, do we have any estimation on timing for the remaining items?
Mayor, we will make the staff presentations as short as the council desires.
Okay. Is there a consensus to try to have a more expedited review of A2 through 4, potentially, and hopefully to also have the comments be as brief as possible, that we can focus in and hopefully try to move forward? And if not, we need to figure out what we're going to carry. Do we have consensus to try to move forward?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, I just didn't hear anything. I want to make sure that, especially because it's nighttime, that we're all...
Is there any items that we can push over to an extra gen, or are these all sort of time-sensitive?
A2's the only one that's time-sensitive, from my standpoint, from a staff standpoint.
Are there critical mass of speakers on any of the items?
A2 has five speakers.
Okay, is that the largest?
That's the largest.
Okay. Do we want to try to hear all of the remaining three? Do we want to try to carry one? Do we want to try to carry two? I'm trying to make it a...
Maybe carry A3 and listen to, I think, A4. We have a speaker in the audience that I think has been sitting here all night long.
Okay, how does that sound to staff? Okay. So just for clarity for the public, at 12:11, we've decided to move forward with A2 and A4. And I hear A3 at a later council meeting. Apologies if anyone was waiting for A3. Okay, thank you so much, A2.
Another ring.
Yeah?
I'm ready, good evening. I wasn't sure, sorry, sorry. I'm pumped, I'm ready to go, okay. So, in the spirit of being short and brief, and assuming everyone has read the staff report, this evening, you are being asked to consider an amendment to the disposition and development agreement binding between the successor agency to the Culver City Redevelopment Agency and the Culver Public Market related to a commercial project at Washington Boulevard and Centinela Avenue on the northwest and northeast corners. This evening, the developer is requesting an amendment to the DDA to modify and reduce the project scale and remove the 11,500-square-foot market hall component and increase the public plazas fronting the project on Site A, which is the northwest corner. Additionally, they would like to reduce the parking structure, that is, a public parking structure, from 180 spaces to 125 spaces, for which the city has allocated $6.6 million in bond proceeds to help fund that. They are also asking to combine the two buildings that were originally situated on Site B, which is on the northeast corner, into one building envelope and allow for additional outdoor dining. The total project square foot reduction would be approximately 13,000 square feet. I do have a presentation that shows the slides, I don't need to show it, but that is my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and the developer is here as well. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much, I really appreciate your brevity, and we did, we reviewed the staff report. The speakers, please.
Great, we have five speakers.
Okay.
We'll say the orders, Jean Valentine, Melissa Sanders, Jonathan Mandell, Heather Moses, and Amanda Shue.
Our first speaker is Jean Valentine. Jean, you've been unmuted, go ahead. Looks like they muted themselves, so we're going to keep going here. Melissa Sanders is our next speaker. Not seeing them online.
Can you unmute me, please?
Want to try Jean Valentine again? Jean Valentine.
Dan, you want to call the speakers? Say, Clark?
What are we waiting for?
We had a little issue.
Jean, are you able to hear us in the council chamber?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay. Jean Valentine, I live at 4023 Colonial Avenue. It seems like you're really rushing through this item, because it is after midnight, and I'm objecting to this rushing through this item. I've lived here on Colonial Avenue for 35 years, and this project has been long in the making, and we on Colonial Avenue do support this project, but we have some big concerns about parking and traffic on our very narrow street. The presentation talked about Washington Boulevard and Centinela, but actually, entry into the parking garage is going to be off of our small, narrow street, Colonial Avenue, and also, southbound traffic off of Washington Place will be able to travel down Colonial Avenue in an attempt to get into this parking garage. I did talk with Andrew Maximus at Traffic and Gabriela Silva in planning, and I do appreciate the input that they gave me. They indicated that the construction workers on this project will not be able to park on Colonial Avenue or in the neighborhoods, and that the developer's plan has to include a parking plan for the workers. They also indicated that the plan is going to require a truck route, and that trucks will not be allowed to use Colonial Avenue, they will have to use only Centinela and Washington. I was also assured that there is going to be a look-back provision for the project, so that once it opens and it's 85% occupied, that there will be a traffic study and a parking study to see how this has impacted us. Colonial Avenue is a very narrow street, most of the people on the street do park on the street, so both sides of the street are parked up, and I can envision that people coming down the street would rather just pull over and park on the street, rather than pull into the parking structure, so that's a pretty big concern. I think most importantly, and what I, I don't, I don't think that we should have skipped over the overview of what this project is, because it's going to include a number of restaurants, and there's been no discussion here tonight about how many restaurants that's going to be. I attended the meeting at the park several months ago, and the developer at that time was very proud of the fact that they had three restaurants that were, I'm not sure if they had contracted to be part of this, or they were promising to be part of this, but one was a brewery. The other two sounded like fast food restaurants to me, one was a pizza place and one was a churro place. So I would really request council to have some kind of approval process for what.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Mandell. Jonathan, you've been unmuted, go ahead.
I'll try to be brief, as it's past my bedtime, and I'm sure past many of yours as well. First, I just want to start by echoing Jean's point about rushing through this agenda item, and I think that really echoes some larger concerns that I have about the lack of community input on this project over the last four or five years. While this amendment is in theory about just, you know, amending the number of parking spaces, amending the frontage toward, on Washington Boulevard, I think the larger issue is that this is a substantively different project than the project that the public approved. This is a project that began over 12 years ago, the particular project of Culver Public Market Hall gathered steam about six years ago, and the truth is that we're just facing a different set of needs than we were when this project began, so I really urge you to oppose this amendment tonight, and just take a step back and create a little bit more time to reevaluate this project. I have a number of reasons why I think this project is really not a great idea. For the sake of time, I'm not going to elaborate each and every one of my points, but I will just say that this is simply not the project that was approved previously, and moreover, the outreach about this project has been kind of shockingly minimal. At the single community meeting that was held, outreach in advance was really close to nonexistent. I should say, I'm a renter, I live about three buildings away from the proposed site, and I didn't receive anything in the mail, I didn't hear anything from my neighbors or anything like that, it's really just kind of by chance that I saw this mentioned in a, I don't know, like, an article on an urban development site. So outreach was incredibly poor, and at that meeting, one of the developers said multiple times that this project is one that has been developed with the city, the exact phrase they used was "behind closed doors" over the past several years, and that's really not what we want to hear as community members about a project that will substantively change this neighborhood. So I really urge council to slow down on this project, and finally, to remember why this strip of Culver City is part of the city in the first place, and that's because in the 1920s, the city thought it would be prudent to annex this long strip of commercial establishments consisting of bootlegger bars, a great owned racing track, essentially to take advantage of the tax revenue without shouldering the social responsibility of the workers, often poor, often racialized, who lived in the surrounding areas, and I fear that pushing through this project will be a mere perpetuation of that history. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heather Moses. Heather, you've been unmuted, go ahead.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. My name's Heather Moses, I'm a longtime resident of Culver City. We bought our home 26 years ago and have lived in West Culver City, near the vacant lots on the corner of Centinela and Washington for over 18 years. Our address is 12326 Herbert Street. I'm asking for your support on the amendment proposed. Regency Centers has done a great work in getting the word out about the changes, and our neighborhood on Herbert Street is excited about the new restaurants and the community space. We've been waiting for nearly 20 years for the space to be developed and to remove the empty lots that do nothing for our neighborhood. We've waited long enough, and the proposed plan would support the existing businesses in West Culver City, and we look forward to it. Please support this project and help it move to completion. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Shue. Amanda, you've been unmuted, go ahead.
Hi, I am speaking for Amanda, I am her husband, she had to go to sleep. We are residents at 12327 Herbert Street and would like to voice our support. We've been excited for the potential business to come to the area for a few years now, and are supportive of whatever expedited development beyond the dirt lots that they are now. We believe the area would thrive by having different types of places to gather, perhaps bookstore, makerspace, salad place, book place, places that offer fresher options that are not available in the area. I also saw there's a green gathering space proposed, and I'm very supportive of this. There are a few sidewalk dining spaces, but not much else available. We believe providing outdoor gathering space would really elevate this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, councilmember Vera.
I have no questions.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Are we just doing questions, or are we actually?
Whatever comments or questions you might have, any feedback, now's the time. Thank you.
Well, we've been waiting for this a long time. The project has changed, I agree with that, from the get-go, has been a number of public meetings in the beginning, and the thing is that time is sort of the enemy here, because the world is changing, and I think that what we have now is doable, and the developer is willing to do it, so I agree with the last two speakers, that it's time to make this happen. So I'm in support, and I would be happy to approve the amendment.
Councilmember Puzza.
Thanks. Can you address any of the questions that the public comments had about traffic mitigation, and what else, that there's vehicular access and concerns about Colonial Avenue?
So, the parking structure has entries and exits on Colonial Avenue before the alley, so between Colonial, from Washington Boulevard to Colonial Avenue to the alley. At the alley, there was a mitigation that was previously approved that blocks northbound traffic from Washington Boulevard, so it would block any traffic that would turn onto Colonial Avenue, proceeding all the way down Colonial towards Washington Place. However, as I think Ms. Valentine mentioned, it is open if you turn down Washington Place and came in that way. There's also an entrance on Centinela Boulevard as well. In regard to the traffic concerns, I think Ms. Valentine mentioned that planning is, you know, would be working with them on a parking plan, a truck route, obviously, construction staging is something that's done through the planning approval process for this particular event. Some of the other items that we heard were the restaurant selection, that is governed, those vendors or the types of restaurants are governed by the disposition and development agreement, so we would, we would make sure that that conforms to what was previously approved for the project site. And then, in regard to the outreach, we would have a different opinion than Mr. Mandell on that. We actually sent over 1,000 notices out for this particular meeting, both for the community meeting and for the meeting that was supposed to occur on October 14th, we did gov deliveries, we had a decent amount of people at the community outreach meeting, we had over 40 people that were there, so we do not feel that we were deficient on the public outreach, the targeted public outreach for this event, and we just sent another notice, another gov delivery, I believe on Friday, as well.
Excellent, thank you, that was comprehensive. For the sake of time, I wish that this could be used for housing, I know that that's not a possibility, I do agree with councilmember Erickson, for the sake of time, this project needs to move forward, and so I support approving this amendment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I have to apologize to those who are frustrated about not having a more in-depth discussion. It's unfortunate when we start on the action items at 10 o'clock at night. Let's get going. I just woke up. So, I've been following this since the redevelopment agency purchased the properties 2004, 2005, something like that, it was like two decades ago. Tore down what was there, and the poor neighbors in that area have been looking at dirt and honestly blight for 20 years. And, you know, a lot of it's been out of our control, the Great Recession, the pandemic, but, and I attended that, that 40-plus-person meeting where the developer gave a presentation. The major changes to this are, I think, three things, no more market hall, more open space, passive space out front for gathering, and fewer parking spaces. I think the biggest concern out of that for the neighborhood is fewer parking spaces, there's a concern of employees and customers parking in the neighborhoods. I hope that we can monitor and mitigate that, if there is a concern, or if there is a problem going forward. But, by and large, I mean, the vast majority of folks are just, really want something there, anything, I mean, not anything, but this mix of restaurants, and it looks like they have four letter of intent, letters of intent, or, looking at the presentation here, so half of them, I'm sure that the ball kind of keeps rolling. Hey.
Good evening. We are in leases with four different concepts, and we have a few other LOIs that we are negotiating currently on the spaces, and we're really excited about that, given that we haven't started construction on this, if we move forward.
Yeah, okay, thanks. So that's great, and the other great thing is, it's in the report as well, that they began construction before the pandemic, the underground work is complete, or almost entirely complete, so the construction timeline will be shorter, which will benefit the neighbors as well. So I'm in favor of this, I think it'll really enhance the neighborhood down there, it'll make it more walkable, more enjoyable, places for folks to go. I'm excited to go down there and eat at these restaurants myself. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you for the brief staff report, and thanks for community members who were able to stick in with us and give some comment this morning. I, you know, I won't belabor this point, but I am appreciative for the pretty detailed staff report and the additional slides that are attached, if the public would like to view those, and normally, I'm sure Ms. Wanda would have provided a very wonderful overview. I do just believe, while, you know, I'm always a proponent of advocating for housing, this site. this site, I remember back when I was first in the council, having closed session about these, about this property. So it's been in the works for some time. And I think the goal that we probably all share is to not have an empty dirt, you know, area for, you know, more and more and more and more time. So we want to move forward with this amendment so that there is some community benefit. We want to be mindful and continue to be responsive to our community throughout this process. I'm grateful to see the projected jobs that will be generated with this project and looking forward to moving forward. So is there, I believe there's already a motion on the table for this amendment. Was it fully read out? I do think it needs to be.
I will read it out fully.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. This is approval of an amendment to the disposition and development agreement by and between the successor agency to the Culver City Redevelopment Agency and the Culver Public Market LLC related to a commercial project at Washington Boulevard and Centinella Avenue, Culver Public Market, located at 12337 to 12423 Washington Boulevard, 4061 to 4063 Centinella Avenue, and 4064 Colonial Avenue. And there was a motion by Councilmember Erickson, a second by Councilmember Vera, to approve this amendment. Please vote. All members have voted, and it passes unanimously.
Okay, we're going to move on to A4. Thank you.
Not yet. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Mark Munzer. Good morning. Excuse me. Haven't done that in a while. Mark Munzer, Planning and Development Director, I'm here tonight with their chief building official, Tim Koltzoroff. We do have a presentation, Mayor, but in the interest of time, we have submitted the staff report, a summary of this. This was council consensus and referred to staff back in April of this year for a transparency ordinance. In summary, what a transparency ordinance does, and where we provided other examples from other communities, is that it largely, and this is in the staff report, requires all contractors and subcontractors applying for building permits. And under the umbrella of a building permit, that they disclose any pending or final determinations of state or federal labor violations, and any penalties paid to any government agencies related to such violations. So that would be an additional disclosure prior to receiving a permit from the city. There are various thresholds that various cities in Southern California, which we've articulated in the staff report, have for both commercial and residential projects. We would likely recommend something similar. The staff report notes the City of Carson is, if the council had interest in bringing this back as an ordinance, this is for discussion this evening, we would likely, with your consensus, base our ordinance on the City of Carson ordinance. So we do have the presentation. Happy to go through it, but I will take your direction. Thank you.
Do colleagues need a full presentation of this? Okay. Can we have the speakers? Thank you so much. Can we have the speakers for this item?
We have two speakers. One is Melissa Sanders, but not seeing them online or in chambers. Our second speaker is Richard Burns.
Okay.
Well, I was going to start off with good evening, but I was corrected. Good morning. Thank you very much. I'll make this short. Mayor, council. My name is Richard Burns. I'm a representative with the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. We support this ordinance. There's been a few cities from San Diego, Irvine, and, like the gentleman said, Carson, that have been working with this. It helps the, let's say, the bad players that come into your city where they have to start off with their history. And then it gives the opportunity of the city to stop the job, to make the job right. Not necessarily to have the bad practice contractor stop work, but when they come to the City of Carson to do the right thing and build right and treat the workers and pay them right. Again, my name is Richard Burns with the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters, and we support this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you. I too support this ordinance, you know, like in the staff report where it says the main intent of this ordinance is to encourage fair labor and business practices in the construction industry. And I think, you know, we owe it to anybody coming in here and doing business in terms of building that we ensure that there is fair practices across the board. That being said, I support it. I would like, I'd be happy to make a motion to come back with an ordinance similar to Carson's. Just a quick question. I know Carson has 10,000 or 20,000 square feet, and San Diego has 10,000 square feet in terms of projects that would be... Is there any setback in going like 15,000 square feet in the middle? Or would that complicate things too much?
It could be, we could do a sliding scale. It's a policy decision. Generally, the ordinance target the larger development projects that have, you know, larger workforce and multiple subcontractors. So I think that's why a few of the cities have the larger 20,000 square feet. It is a policy decision.
So I understand, but would it make sense to go a little bit lower? Or would that not make sense overall?
If I may, before we came back, Councilmember Vera, we would do some, we would look at, you know, square footage and, you know, where there's a potential break. So how common is, you know, 15,000 square feet? Or do most of them fall, you know, into larger projects once you get beyond, you know, 10,000 square feet? I feel like 10,000 square feet is often a threshold too in various types of things that we do. But we'll do a little bit more data analysis before we make that recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson.
I think this is good. I agree with Councilmember Vera.
Councilmember Puzza.
Thanks for the brief staff report and for the public comment. I think I concur with my colleagues. I support this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah. I appreciate Mr. Burns. Councilmember Vera and I went down to their training facility and got a deeper understanding of their needs. And as a member of a union myself, I know that protections like this are important, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment. Thank you for bringing this item back. I'm really grateful for the comparison with similar ordinances across the area. I wanted to get an understanding of what the timeline would potentially look like in terms of the data review that would need to be done on staff side to sort of come back with some suggestions for us.
I would think that we would, we could do that in the first quarter of 2025.
Okay. It looks like, thank you for that. It looks like there is consensus here. An emotion made and seconded?
Yes, we have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second from Vice Mayor O'Brien, to direct staff to prepare a transparency ordinance similar to the City of Carson's ordinance and come back to the city for approval.
Thank you. And there'll be detail in that staff report about why the, you know, there'll be a data-driven rationale as to the square footage that will suggest, correct? I just want to make sure.
Yes, Mayor. In addition, also the residential number of units.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work.
You're welcome.
Members may vote. All members have voted. That is approved unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are back down to public comment for items not on the agenda.
We have three speakers signed up right now.
Okay.
Jim Bowen, Gary Zeiss, and Falaz Estani.
Okay.
First speaker, Jim Bowen. Not seeing them online or in council chambers. Our next speaker is Gary Zeiss. Gary, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. Council, once again, we are here late because of the Gaza ordinance, I mean, the Gaza resolution issue. And it's gone on a long time. And one of the things that's really frustrating to me about the way this is being handled is however it is resolved, no one is going to get, not one life is going to be saved. I would much rather see all of this energy going into, say, let's bring a family that needs medical care over. You know, one of the school board candidates is an immigration attorney. You know, let's do something that'll actually help some people. It's not going to be millions of people, but a family or two that really needs the help. We could do. Instead of doing all of this performative stuff, it's going to ultimately mean nothing. You know, it's much easier to do this. Aside from staying up late, it's much easier to just have things that are symbolic. And one of the speakers actually said it's symbolic. It's much harder to actually do something that's going to help somebody. But if we're going to do something at all, we should do something that's going to help people. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Falaz Estani.
Hi. He actually went to sleep. He's very tired. But he sent me a message on his behalf. He said out of the 49 public comments, the vast majority were in support of asking council to direct staff to hold a special meeting at ERAC on November 19th, and that we've been here since August 12th. I personally was here last meeting, and nobody was here. So I made sure everybody turned out today so that we can ensure that we have three nodding heads to ask staff to hold a discussion to make people feel seen and heard in the city and protected. And also, I want to support McBride, committee member of ERAC, McBride's request today. Councilmember Vera, this was your idea, asking us to go through ERAC. So we're following your lead, and we're asking Vice Mayor O'Brien, as well as a third vote, hopefully we can have the mayor in good conscience do the right thing tonight so that we can go home and have a peace of mind. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Okay. Items for members. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you. So I did speak with the group, and I did promise that I would help try to send it to ERAC. I think one of the speakers said, I think it was Mr. Prophet Connor, about we're all talking past each other. Nobody's really listening on either side. Whether I'm for it or not, I think is irrelevant at this point. I think we need a space where we can have a respectful conversation, where people can come to common grounds and listen to each other's needs from wherever you stand on it. So I would ask for three nodding heads to send it to ERAC for a conversation, not directing ERAC for anything, but for a conversation to ensue, to find common grounds, and to ensure that we're listening to all community members. And where it goes, from there it goes. But if I can get three nodding heads for that.
Councilmember Vera, if I may clarify, do you mean to agendize consideration of the ERAC amending its work plan to include this community conversation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you.
So we're asking for this to be agendized at our next meeting.
I don't know what the work plan is or what their load is, but if possible, if not, then the one after that, if it doesn't go on too long.
The next meeting would be in January?
I think I will defer to the clerk and city manager's office as to whether the November 11th agenda can absorb this item.
Okay.
To discuss the amendment to the work plan.
The clerk is shaking her head at it.
I would say that with the addition of the fee schedule that has just been moved in all of the public hearings, it is a very loaded meeting.
Okay, let's, when we put it on this cut.
You would need to have three nodding heads to bring it back to council on a future meeting date to consider remanding it to the ERAC for them to do a discussion, right?
No, it's actually to consider amendment to ERAC's work plan to include this community conversation.
It's not possible to just get three nodding heads and send it to ERAC?
I mean, they have an approved work plan by the city council, which typically can only be amended by approval of the council.
Okay.
But the council approves the work plan, so I just, it's not really agendized for this evening for a discussion of that.
So in terms of nodding heads?
What's the ask?
To consider, to get consensus to bring back an action item to discuss changing the work plan of the ERAC to include a community discussion.
Does that be at a future council meeting?
Yes. Okay. I have a nodding head from Councilmember Puzza, Vera, and Vice Mayor O'Brien. That it's to be determined.
Any other items for you, Councilmember Vera? Councilmember Erickson?
Nope.
Councilmember Puzza?
Yeah, picking up on a public comment earlier, I was wondering if I could get nodding heads to agendize staff to apply for the funding for Home Key Plus since the notice of funding availability will become eligible in November.
Can we have?
Can I ask a question? Don't we need a site when we apply for that? Because we have a site when we apply for the Home Key, right? So I'm just curious if we can just apply out in the...
But I think, are we allowed to discuss this? But the point is to apply for the funding, and then, so then, once you find the site, then you have the funding. But if you wait, then you have to apply for the funding, and then you'll lose it. So you have to apply, it's important to apply for the funding now.
You mean, we can get the funding without the site?
Maybe that direction could be offering friendly amendment to have staff explore the feasibility of us applying for this.
I'd like to. That's fair.
Maybe that could be the language, and if there's a site, great. So staff can determine whether it is feasible.
Sure.
Okay. Can I just get?
Can I just get that rephrased again so I can read it?
Well, I don't want to make sure.
Agendize staff to see if it's feasible to apply for funding for the Home Key Plus program.
And when is the funding window? Do you know?
The Notice of Funding Availability is expected to be available in November.
This like tomorrow, November? Okay.
Yeah, Friday, yep.
All right, now. Director Munzer is listening. Anything else, Councilmember Puzza?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Did we get the heads for that? Am I recorded as supporting that? Did you get the nodding heads you needed?
Yes, we did. Yes, yes. Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Puzza, and Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor O'Brien, you have any items?
No, Mayor.
Okay. The only other thing I want to lift up is potentially formally agendizing a conversation with our school, school board slash council subcommittee as it pertains to harm reduction in the area of availability of Narcan and fentanyl strips with our school partners, and whether that's also a conversation with the parks, the teen center, and other locations where young people are, considering the data that was shared tonight. And again, that would just be a conversation at that subcommittee.
For the subcommittee, for the liaison?
For the liaison committee, correct.
Yeah. Okay. Nodding heads from Vice Mayor O'Brien, Councilmember Puzza, Ericson, everybody.
Okay, do we have an adjournment request?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please. Oh, okay. I'm like, what's going on? It's so late, I went with it. I believe you.
I can't see the names now. I don't know why, so.
It's because it's late.
Thank you. It went to sleep. Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor O'Brien, and a second from Councilmember Vera. Hold on one second. That's to adjourn. The time is 12:55. Thank you. Thank you, and we are adjourned unanimously.